Morning, everyone. The January 23rd, 2013 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed, posted, in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, and are closed captioned for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note some customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV program, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv. Proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chamber out to the mezzanine; proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with the marshal or fire officials for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online, in the clerk's office, or at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If there's anyone present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please come forward and see the city clerk's office staff. If you've parked in the garage, crossed the street, and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered the chambers, please exit to your right and see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend Bonita Pauli, Christ Episcopal Church, and remain standing for the pledge. Thank you.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, who has filled this world with beauty, we thank you for your presence among us this morning. Open our eyes to behold your gracious hand in all your works. Be present with each of these council members seated here today. Guide their minds and hearts as they seek your will. Fill them with the love of truth and righteousness; strengthen them in their trials and temptations; save them from bitterness and despair; and make them ever mindful of their calling to serve in their offices, to promote the well-being of all people as they address the needs and wants of our city. We ask this in your most holy name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, that is what liberty and justice rule.
And we will now proceed with the ceremonial portion of the agenda. What kind of an animal? Ugh, okay, they're beautiful. We're missing Councilman Ross at this moment. Okay, this is the ceremonial portion of the agenda, and for our first item, it's my delight and pleasure to present the Employee of the Year. I would like to invite our city manager, Betsy Fretwell, and Operations and Maintenance Director Larry Hugness to join us in presenting this incredible award. I'm pleased to announce that the 2012 Employee of the Year is Ryan Roskins. And Ryan, will you please join us here?
Awesome, Ryan, awesome, Ryan, wow, wow.
Ryan is a motor sweeper operator, and he's been with the city for 14 years. He's an outstanding employee, and over the past year rendered extra-special customer service to a citizen in need. February 13th, Ryan was street sweeping in the Lakes neighborhood in Ward 2 when he noticed an elderly man on the sidewalk who seemed disoriented. Ryan stopped his sweeper and engaged the man in conversation to see if he needed assistance. The gentleman was indeed confused, but Ryan was able to get his name. Ryan then called his own wife at home and had her run a search on the gentleman's name to see if she could find out a nearby address. Ryan's wife found one a couple of blocks away, and Ryan convinced the gentleman to stay where he was until Ryan returned to him. He went to the address, found the man's son, who was extremely relieved that his father had been found. The son was able to get his father home, thanks to Ryan. Later that day, Ryan's supervisor received a call from the son who explained that his father indeed did have medical concerns. The son expressed his deep appreciation that Ryan had taken the time to assist his father and ensure that he was reunited with his family to be safe and sound. The city of Las Vegas is so privileged to have a dedicated and caring employee like Ryan. On behalf of the entire city council, it is indeed a pleasure to name Ryan the 2012 Employee of the Year. The year, this is the year. Along with this award, Ryan has received a $200 Visa gift card, compliments of One Nevada Credit Union, $500 from the city, and a donation of $500 will be made to the charity of his choice by SuperPon. At this time, I'd like to bring our wonderful city manager, Betsy Fretwell, to say a few words, and then we'll hear possibly and probably from Larry and Ryan.
Mayor, thank you very much. I asked Larry to join me up here because I know he probably has some comments to share as well, but I think Ryan is a fantastic selection. One, he comes from a family of public servants. Both of his parents worked for the city of Las Vegas. One of them's recently retired, a couple of years ago, right, Ryan? His mom. And his dad is still working for us in the Parks Department and does an incredible job and has great ideas. So, we can tell...
My cousin also.
And his cousin. So, a whole family of public servants. And so, I know that that upbringing and that commitment to community has influenced your way of life and going that extra step. I couldn't figure out a better employee for us to acknowledge this year. You went above and beyond the call of duty to take care of our citizens, Ryan. I mean, I know you're chuckling. It makes a big difference, and so, thank you, and we're really proud of you. And all the other employees of the month, I mean, every one of them did something extraordinary this year. Yours just rose to the top in taking care of that gentleman that desperately needed some help that day on the street. So, thank you for going the extra mile.
Thank you, Betsy. Betsy about said it all, but I want to, number one, thank the mayor and the council and the city manager's office for sponsoring the Employee of the Month and Employee of the Year program. It's a great way to acknowledge some of our outstanding employees, and we have a lot of them. I can't think of a better choice than Ryan. He's out there doing his job every day and contributes his part to make this a world-class city that it really is. He went above and beyond the call of duty, as he always does. So, thank you very much, Ryan.
Thank you.
How about a few words?
Absolutely. We'd like that.
I would like to declare that I will be running for mayor next term.
You're welcome, and great job.
No, I'm kidding. I wouldn't do that to you, Las Vegas. I like you too much. The Street Department is a great organization full of many wonderful people who are working hard to clean and maintain our great city, of which I am proud to say that I am a part. I cannot feel deserving of any award. Instead, I see this as a wonderful and gracious gift from my bosses, who I have happily served for 14 years and I cannot complain about. I would like to express my deepest thanks to the city of Las Vegas, my bosses, Councilman Mayor Goodman, and the Lord Jesus Christ, who I owe everything to. This is a very special moment for me. Thank you.
You can't run away. You're running for mayor. So, get out there and start earning money, you know? That's coming very soon. Anyway, we are so proud to honor you because you honor us with everything you do, as Ms. Fretwell, Mr. Hugness said. You've just been a great employee. I hope I live to have 14 years with the city in some capacity, but we have this beautiful plaque that we are giving Ryan as Employee of the Year. And I just wish you the very best. You do, you know, the jobs that you do and your colleagues, we take so much for granted, but you help keep our city pristine, looking fabulous to everybody who comes here, and we're just delighted. Most deservedly to you from the entire city. Thank you very much, Ryan. You're young enough to do another at least 28 years. Yes, all the way.
I ran away last week. Downtown, anytime.
Yeah. How did you get him? He's just yours.
He's spoken for.
Spoken for. Thank you, thank you. And now, because it is the second meeting of the month, we'll also recognize our January 2013 Employee of the Month. I'd like to invite Human Resources Director Dan Tarwater to join us at the podium. Good morning. Our employees strive to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stand for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, ownership now. And I'm proud to announce that the January Employee of the Month is Mandy Bowler. Mandy, please come on up and join us. Mandy is a human resources technician. Good morning. This is so exciting. And she's been with the city for seven years. In August, the city's Risk and Benefits Division was tasked with developing a communication plan that would be used to educate more than 1,600 of the city employees and retirees about a new group health program. I'd like you to go home and help my husband, because he doesn't understand it yet. Mandy willingly assumed the responsibility of program coordinator, developing benefit booklets, information sheets, mailers, and a PowerPoint presentation. She arranged more than 30 group meetings at locations across the city to ensure that employees understood the new insurance program. Many times, she began her days with off-site meetings as early as 5:30 in the morning, and she finished her days at 7:30 at night at City Hall. Without Mandy's hard work and dedication, the city would not have been able to accomplish this large education and enrollment process in such an organized and comprehensive fashion. The city of Las Vegas is so proud to have our Mandy as part of our team. On behalf of the entire city council, it is a pleasure indeed to name Mandy that January 2013 Employee of the Month. Along with this award, Mandy has received a $100 Visa gift card, compliments of One Nevada Credit Union, and a donation of $100 will be made to the charity of her choice by SuperPon. She's also received various other awards from the city and council to recognize her great work. In addition to our left... Ta-da. There you are. Sort of awesome. You'll see this street sign with Mandy's name on it that will be posted in front of City Hall on Main Street for the next 30 days. And at this time, I'd like to ask Dan Tarwater to say a few words, and then we will hear from Mandy.
Thank you very much. I too appreciate the support we get from the mayor and council on this program. It's a great program. The people that know Mandy know that she has one outstanding quality that many people don't, and that is, when you visit with her, usually bring her a question or a problem to work out, she treats you like you're part of her family. And that's the answer you get back, as if you were part of her family. And not many people have that quality. She's a multi-talented person that works here in our Human Resources Department, like many of the employees in our department. I think we have the best department in the entire state. But she stands out, and she does a lot of our special projects, can work in any core area, and again, she has that special touch. She treats you like family. So, congratulations. And hopefully, will be standing up here next year an Employee of the Year.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Well, Mr. Roskins is a hard act to follow. Congratulations, Ryan. I'd like to thank the academy... Oh, I'm sorry. Wrong side of the card. Thank you, mayor and council, very much. Thank you, Betsy. I appreciate this honor very much. The biggest honor, though, that I've ever received was somebody once told me that I was just like my mother. That is the most amazing compliment that anybody could ever give me. My mother is here today to support me, as she has been my whole life, no matter what harebrained idea I've had, no matter how silly or stupid it may have been. She has always said, "All right, Mandy, whatever you want to do, how can I help?" And she's here to support me today. My mother, Shannon Verser, and my sister Andrea, who works up in PRNS, and my little nephew Leo are the lights of my life. 2012 was a bang-up year for me. Those close to me know that, but I graduated from the University of Nevada-Las Vegas with a Bachelor of Arts degree in anthropology, which has been a lifelong goal and dream of mine. I was able to study in Cambridge, United Kingdom, to begin my graduate work in archaeology. And I couldn't have done that without the support of the Human Resources Department and the commitment to education and to the employees that Vicki Robinson, my boss who had the audacity to retire, had, Dan Tarwater, and before Dan, Claudette Ennis. They all have demonstrated an incredible commitment to education, and I, for one, appreciate it very much. And I'd like to also thank the open enrollment team, Sandy Ray, Dan Rigato, Candice Mbaye, Ron Pruitt, Sidney Everback, and I'd like to give a special thanks to Colleen Hanley, who pitched in and helped when she was asked to do so. We appreciate all your help. And we couldn't have done all of these meetings and talked to so many employees and got so much accomplished without them. We're not done, though. I mean, we'll still come out. We'll still answer every question you have. I'll be happy to come to your house, mayor, and speak with Mr. Goodman. I did actually, I might have to do that, because I did actually promise somebody that we'd have showgirls and a band the next year for open enrollment.
Oh, that's nice.
Okay. Showgirls and a band.
The band.
Well, typically, when I say open enrollment, 50 sets of eyes in the room just glaze over. So, it's interesting. I would also like to send a special thank you out to Vicki Robinson. I don't see her here, but I'd like her to know that I thank her for her guidance, her caring, and for being a great manager over my years at the city. I have been very lucky to only work for one manager during my whole city career, and it has been Vicki. And like I said, the audacity, she had to retire. But, and I would also like to acknowledge somebody else, much to her chagrin, I'm sure. Over my years at the city of Las Vegas, I have been taught and mentored by Christina Rost. And she's taught me so much, and she continues to teach me so much every day, and I appreciate her help and her support and her being very much like my mom when I come up with a harebrained idea, saying, "All right, Mandy, we'll see how this works for you." So, I appreciate you, Christina. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Wonderful job. You are indeed a remarkable woman, and congratulations on your degree. Thank you for all that you do for the city. And just know that your nephew, look at that attention. Grandma, are you a lucky lady? Keep doing what you've done. You've obviously been extremely successful. We're very proud, and we want to give you the Employee of the Month certificate there. And then, if you'll step over here, we can have a picture taken with you by the sign that will be there for the next month. Thank you. Congratulations. Do you want to briefly step over? Do a step over quickly, shall we, briefly? Right. Oh, that's a good idea. We can go behind the sign, and here's a good luck. Oops, no eyeglasses. For our next item, I'd like to ask Betty Evans, the Chair of the Las Vegas Senior Citizen Advisory Board, to join us at the podium. Betty's going to recognize our Senior of the Quarter. Good morning.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see all of you. Well, it definitely is my pleasure to be here today with all these other recognitions that are going on. It's, you know, we talk about that it takes a village to raise a child. Well, it also takes a village to help our seniors be safe, be active, and be healthy. And so, today, I would like to recognize two individuals who are very instrumental in doing that. They were nominated from Ronnie Fuller at the Centennial Hills Active Adult Day Center. And so, I'd like to have Janet and Roger join me up here, please. Janet and Roger are amazing people. Why are they amazing? Because they do what a lot of us would like to do and don't have the time, or we just haven't got there yet. But they give back. They pay it forward. They give service. What they do for the Active Adult Center is they help take care of some of the seniors that come in there. Today, they tell me they're having a luncheon this afternoon, so they're going to be taking their plaque back to lunch. Awesome lunch, yes. They participate in a park ambassador program. And I ask Roger to tell us a little bit about that ambassador program and what do they
Park ambassadors are a very good volunteer program that the city has. And Janet and I, we have two parks that we walk two or three times a month, and anything we see that needs fixing or modified or whatever to make things better, then this is reported to a monthly meeting we have, and 99% of the time, it's taken care of.
They're looking out for our parks, and I bet you they're picking up trash along the way, too. I know they are. One of the things that they like to do is, from their senior center, is they will take seniors to their doctor's appointments. It's surprising, a lot of people don't have a way just to get to the doctor's appointment. And I remember when I grew up, that was the thing that the lady was talking about, her mom. That's what my mom did. She would drive everybody to the doctor's appointment, and so, here they are doing the same thing. You've got to get to the doctor's appointment so you can help stay healthy. And some of the other things that they do is they will take in meals to their seniors. So, they're their own Meals on Wheels program. Roger does, he's the go-to guy in their community, in their neighborhood. If somebody needs a light switch replaced, maybe the flapper in the toilet is leaking and it needs replaced, he's the guy to go to. If you need to borrow a tool, go see Roger. And other simple things, like, I need to go to the grocery store and I don't have a way to get there, and it's too far for me to walk. Guess who drives them?
Well, we kind of take turns. Also, airports, you know, we take people to the airport who don't want to leave their car there. I mean, it's a simple thing for us. We enjoy getting out, so if we can help somebody along the way, that's great.
And I know that they will tell you that they've gotten to know these people really well. And what happens when you know someone really well? They become like family. And so, then, when Roger was sick a few weeks ago, what did the community do back for him but brought him a hot meal? So, everybody becomes family, and we all benefit from that. And you know what? They do this out of the goodness from their heart. This is a free service. This is them paying it forward. So, I would like to honor Janet and Roger for being the Senior of the Quarter, and would say... Would you like to say anything else?
You can hold that. Actually, all this goodness starts at home, in your own neighborhood. Be nice to your neighbors, you know, and talk and help them. When they drive by, wave at them, you know? That's what they did back in the old days. So, that's where it starts.
Thank you so much, Roger and Janet.
Thank you, and thank you very much. We're very proud. And we know that everybody, no matter how small, is going to grow up to be a senior one day. So, learn, learn. That's the most important thing. And we congratulate you. We're very proud. And as you know, that award Senior of the Quarter is signed by each of the council persons and myself. So, thank you very much. Thank you. And for our next item, I would like to introduce you all to Veranda Handy, who is our beautiful and passionate committee chairwoman for the American Heart Association Go Red for Women campaign. So, Veranda, please, you are here. Go Red for Women is a national awareness campaign created by the American Red Cross to harness the passion to wipe out heart disease. The Go Red movement empowers and educates women so that they can engage and emerge themselves in the victorious fight against heart disease. Women are encouraged to take charge of their cardiovascular health through this program that began over 10 years ago. Because of these efforts, more than 627,000 women have been saved from heart disease, and 330 fewer women are dying per day. Women who go red are more likely to reduce their risk of heart disease by making healthy lifestyle choices, such as losing weight... I know I have to do that. Increasing exercise, I have to do that. And improving diets, I have to do that. And talking to their doctors about health heart, healthy hearts. Veranda, I want to thank you for all your hard work on this campaign and present you with a proclamation on behalf of National Wear Red Day, February 1st, 2013. And it would be our pleasure to hear from you if you would care to make some comments. We're so proud.
Thank you, mayor. I love that color on you.
I can't imagine why.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, mayor, city council, for this proclamation on behalf of the American Heart Association. We are so honored. And we just want to thank you, Mayor Goodman. You've been a tremendous supporter of the Go Red movement, and because of you, we are able to shine an even brighter light on heart health and just amplify awareness in the city, and that saves lives. So, thank you so much for all your support. National Wear Red Day is the first day of Heart Month in February 13. National Wear Red Day is the first day of Heart Month in February. And we're doing some amazing things around town that I'd like to share with you guys. We are, some of our landmarks are going red. Some of the businesses are going red, like the Stratosphere and Fremont Street Experience and Hard Rock Hotel, just to name a few. We are launching an amazing and powerful red dress awareness exhibit right here in the lobby of City Hall on February 1st. It'll be here until the 20th. You knew about that, right? And we have several community partners that are launching fundraising and awareness campaigns. And on February 1st noon on Fremont Street, we're jump-starting the day with a kickoff celebration. And we're doing it like no other city can. We're doing it Vegas-style. So not only will our amazing mayor be there, but we'll also have local celebrities who support the Go Red movement, like Stratosphere headliner Frankie Marino. And the amazing and talented Kelly Clinton will be there. We'll even have the official Elvis of Las Vegas. We'll have special performances. It'll be a great time. So we encourage the community to wear red, join us on Fremont Street, bring your mother, your sister, your daughters, your friends, and help us show the country that Las Vegas has the biggest heart of all, so.
Now, how do people get involved? How do they come? Where do they contact if they want to participate on the first? What do they do besides? What time does it kickoff?
We kickoff at noon. So meet us at the Third Street stage at Fremont Street noon on February 1st. And if you want more information about the Go Red movement, go to LVgored.org.
And hopefully, all of our panels on City Hall will be turned red. Have you asked about that?
I have asked. And the lobby is red.
And the lobby's red. And how about the Ruvo Brain Institute?
We have not gotten the Brain Institute.
They were red yesterday, so call them and say, please, red.
I will. And I'll tell them that you told me to call them.
So we congratulate you and we're very excited. And for those who are listening, please be sure you come out on February 1st. But more importantly, please take care of your heart. That's what it's all about.
Exactly. That day and throughout the year. It's really important.
Thank you. Thanks so much, Veranda. See, when you stay healthy, eat properly, and exercise, we can all look like this. It'll take me a lifetime more to get there. Okay, we will now, do we need another break? I'm looking at stone faces. Ah, five minutes, literally five minutes. Okay. I'm giving him seven. 10 o'clock sharp. We will see you then. Thank you. How are you? And you wore red.
I wore red. Okay, yeah, was yours? You have a very popular in Chinese population, the community. You are huge. Huge.
...
...
All right, that little recess is over. We're on to Agenda Item Number 10, Public Comment. During this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. We will set the time at one minute at this portion. There will be three more minutes or so at the conclusion. Thank you. Good morning.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. On Item Number 31, what is the projected start and completion dates on that?
All right, when that comes up, we will certainly address that. It's on consent? Well, we definitely will discuss that. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, hearing none. We will move on to Item Number 11, Business Items for Possible Action. Any items from this morning's session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward, acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. I have four items. Item Number 16, Catalyst Fund Agreement with Take-Two Interactive. Our staff has asked that to be stricken. Item Number 34, R52013 Resolution Regarding General Obligation Sewer Bonds. Staff has asked that to be stricken. Item Number 37, Report by the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department on Financial Forecast. Staff has asked that be obeyed till February 6, 2013. And Item Number 51, The Closed Session. Staff has asked that be stricken, and that will be my motion.
Thank you very much. Question for you. I believe one of the councilpersons asked to pull 61, but agrees that it's stricken. Okay. There's a motion. Please vote. And please post. 16 was stricken, 34, 37 was held in abeyance to February 6, and 51 was stricken.
Your Honor?
Yes, please. Councilman Coffin?
Was 20, the parking meter issue, was that also? Okay.
Okay, so was that posted, please? Thank you. And we will now move on to Item Number 12, For Possible Action. To approve the final minutes by reference of the regular City Council January 9, 2013 meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes, please? Mayor Protem?
So moved.
Is a motion? Please vote. And please post. And that carries. We will now move on to the Consent Agenda. And Items 13 through 34, with the exception of 16 and 34, are on the Consent Agenda considered to be routine and recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to have brought forward?
Mayor, I've been asked to bring Items 20 and 31 forward.
Okay, any other items? 20 and 31 will be brought forward. Any other items? Anybody? Okay, hearing none. Please, there's a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items 13 through 34, with the exceptions of 20 and 31.
Thank you. There's a motion? Please vote. And please post. You don't have a place to vote? Councilman? Okay, pulled forward is Item Number 20, asked by Councilperson Coffin. Okay, that motion carried. For possible action to approve or to contract 2018AGL Single and Multi-Space Parking Meters Located in the Medical District bounded by Charleston Boulevard in South, Shadow Lane on the East, Pinto Lane on the North, Rancher Drive on the West, and Downtown bounded by Colorado Avenue on the South, 10th on the East, Washington Avenue on the North, and Main Street on the West. The Department of Economic and Urban Development award recommended to Parkion in the amount of $1,418,055 municipal park enterprise fund. These are in Wards 1, 3, and 5, Councilwoman Tarkanian, Councilman Coffin, and Barlow. And, good morning. Do you, how would you like this to go? We will hear from Brandy Stanley first, please.
Okay. Okay. Just to briefly go over the process, we received bids from 12 companies. This is through a competitive bid process. And those 12 companies were every single manufacturer in the world represented in the United States. The evaluation committee had about 10 members and was comprised of economic and urban development, finance, IT, and parking services. The staff recommendation from the evaluation committee was a company named Parkion. It was unanimous choice. Parkion has the largest installed base in the world and the United States. Their meters manage over 3 million spaces worldwide. This is the meter that's currently used by the RTC out on the street in downtown Las Vegas as we speak. And they have a heavy investment in R&amp;D, so we like the idea of the future potential with this partnership. We're proposing multi-bay meters, meters that manage more than one space at a time. They are 100% solar. They take debit, credit cards, and coins. They have a receipt printer, and they also have the ability to add time.
Excuse me, do they make change?
They do not make change. The machines that will make change cost about $60,000, so...
It will be up to the individual if they're going to be using quarters or some other denomination. They will have to go somewhere to get change.
Correct, or they can use their debit or credit.
Okay, thank you.
There were some special features that were offered with this particular manufacturer. One was an option for a 7-inch full-color screen, which will allow us to display maps and instructions and other information to the constituents of the city in a much more visible fashion. They also have the ability in the future to have interactive content with the keyboard and the screen. There's also an option for motion-activated light bar, so if you're going to be using the meter at night, when you walk up to it, it will light up and allow you to see it so that you can use it much more easily. It also comes with an integration with a company called ParkMe, which has developed an application that will demonstrate via iPhone or smartphone real-time parking availability on the street and off the street. In terms of the contract, the pricing that was negotiated was $5,695 per meter, which incidentally was better pricing than Chicago received when they replaced 4,000 parking meters. The initial order will be about 233 meters and the initial contract cost is about $1.45 million. The ongoing annual cost for software licensing and communication is about $160,000 plus parts and supplies is needed. The Parking Enterprise will fund the entire purchase and all of the ongoing operational costs. It will not be borne in any way, shape, or form by the general fund. Should the council approve this today? We are looking at placing the order in the next couple of days. In the meantime, while we're waiting for the meters... In the meantime, while we're waiting for the meters to arrive, we're going to be preparing the streets, restructuring the parking spaces, and getting everything ready to install the meters, which will probably happen in mid-May.
Do you have a diagram that we could see where they're going to locate, or is that premature?
I do have a diagram. It didn't lend itself very well to your presentation here. We broke it up into three spaces, and I apologize I didn't include it in this. But for the most part, with the exception of a few spaces that we're going to permanently remove, all of the meters that exist today will be replaced on a one-on-one basis by the new meter. So we're not making substantial changes to where they go, other than removing some of the ones that are there now.
And when you say they're multi-space meters, six spaces, four spaces, how many spaces does one of those cover?
The maximum number of spaces you're going to see for spaces that are parallel to the curve that are managed by one meter is eight, but most of them are five or six or maybe even somewhat less. We didn't want people to have to walk a very long distance to get to the meters.
Thank you.
In terms of public communication, we want to make sure that we issue periodic reminders. Frequently asked questions are already up on the parking webpage. We will have additional staff on the street helping people use the meters and trying to understand if there's anything we need to tweak or change with the system for two weeks after the installation. And KCLV is going to assist us with periodic communication up until the installation. And that's it. Does anyone have any questions we can answer?
Yes, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you for bringing this item up for discussion as opposed to consent. The questions I have are just sort of evolving as this company's selection was just brought to us 10 days ago. The briefings we had are, I guess, last, oh, we could go Monday. And so I, seeing this new name, I immediately went to the Google search engine because that's the great reliable thing to find out information. What I found out was that the company had a problem in Seattle, and that one cell tower, and I do not know who was providing the service, but understanding the public needs to know, this is a service that is connected to cellular service. That's how we control it. And so Seattle lost one tower, and it brought down the system downtown. Now, since I brought that issue up to you at that meeting, what have you figured out we would have to do in that kind of situation?
One of the things that this system is capable of is, number one, it's capable of batching transactions in the case of a loss of communications. That's a temporary measure. But another thing is Parkion is able to alternate cellular phone carriers. So if we do lose service, or if there are particular meters that don't get reliable service, we can actually change the carrier to one that has better service. In the case of if you lose a tower all at once, that's something that we would have to work with on Parkion on an ongoing basis. Again, the meters do have the ability to accept credit transactions without communications, and until we can get a solution, we could actually download the information and send it off. That's obviously not the best-case scenario, but there are options to be able to deal with that without bringing the entire system down at once.
Will we play a role in the selection of the cellular carrier?
The cellular carrier is chosen by the manufacturer, and basically, as a city, we are interested in making sure that the communications are maintained. So if we do have communications problem, we're going to expect them to change the carrier and change the modems so that we do have consistent communications.
Well, we don't want them to just get the best price for their carrier service and then find out that it's not reliable downtown. You know, I think we should, if not control, at least play a serious role in the selection process of that carrier. Because I look at one city back east, and this just came up last night, what is it? It's one of the cities near where you used to work, Syracuse, New York. No, you didn't work, you worked in Manchester, New Hampshire, I think, in that area. But City of Syracuse recently said it's got to replace its parking meters because the connection will go dead in all of its stations. These are Parkion meters. They're only seven years old. They're going to have to replace these meters because of a connectivity problem. And so that's the source of a lot of the problems here that could be solved if a city is proactive and gets involved in the very beginning and doesn't let the manufacturer select the source. Because I believe the way it was described by the city manager in Syracuse is that it was out of their control because the wireless connection was provided by a separate company. And so maybe Parkion had a contract, and maybe they didn't like to pay the rent. I mean, who knows what happened? And I just think that, I think we need to know the answer to these things before. I really believe we should control. But we know who provides the best cellular service downtown, and it varies from block to block.
It does.
And maybe we need multiple carriers for redundancy to avoid inconveniencing the public. Parkion. I don't know what caused that, but it's a connectivity problem.
Cell tower went down.
Yeah, the cell tower just went down. Well, I've kind of given you two problems here. Are we, are we going to have a problem with connectivity based upon a contract that Parkion might enter into, like they did in Syracuse?
Councilman, I don't believe so. And the reason I say that is the meters that we are ordering are coming, we specified in the contract that they be provided with 3G modems, which are just being rolled out by Parkion. We already know that the existing communication protocol that they've been using is being discontinued by the carrier, so that's why we specified that it come with a modem that we know is going to last for the future. The other thing is, we wanted to make sure during the RFP process that all of the, that who was capable of carrying wireless communication through several different carriers, because as you so, as you so adroitly pointed out, coverage can vary block by block. So in one block, Verizon may be good, and they may not necessarily be very good the next block. What we wanted to make sure is that they had the capability to deal with that in the correct modem so that we wouldn't have to go down the road of doing a wholesale replacement two or three years after we bought the meter. In order to address your concerns, what we can do is we can work with Parkion to find out what their intentions are in terms of what cellphone carrier they're going, they're going, planning on using for the contract, and we can work with them to make sure that we're not going to have connectivity problems throughout the future. But they do allow multiple carriers, which is, I know that cities have had a problem. If they, if they go with a meter manufacturer that has an agreement with a single carrier, they're in trouble if the carrier doesn't work out or there are dead spots in the installation.
Will these modems be changeable? Because what if in five years, 3G is not offered by a carrier?
The modems are able to be changed out as technology changes. At this point, 3G is probably going to last a number of years. Whether or not the 3G modem will last until, be supported until the end of the contract, nobody really knows. And that's the case with any type of wireless coverage you have with any technology you put in anywhere.
Because I know they're switching to 4G LTE if they can. My point is that the hardware better be interchangeable enough so that we can move with the time so that we don't face the problem that Syracuse is facing. I guess...
Excuse me, Councilman, could we put that in the agreement? That it be reviewable, updatable?
Well, I should think it would be already in the, in the sensible kind of parameters that were in the bid. I haven't seen the bid, the request for proposal or the bids. But those kinds of things are, should be understandable. It should be, maybe not.
But maybe we could do it in relation to this.
Can we have a Parkion person come up to tell us about this?
Make the vote conditional to the review and augmentation. Councilman?
And I'll have some more questions after Councilman Beers.
While our Parkion fellows come in, I just wanted to note that from my understanding of the Syracuse situation, that was a third-party, seven-year-old, underlying cell technology. It wasn't Parkion's doing, and I would submit that the city does not own and operate any seven-year-old cell phones. That's kind of the technology that we're talking about here, that, that piece of this puzzle. It just is the kind of thing you expect sometimes in the computer world. Technology moves on. None of our tech, none of our computers or cell phones that we use in this city are seven years old because the technology moves on, and that's the nature of it.
But here, we're talking about buying hardware at $5,000 or $6,000 a unit.
Right, but that's not the component that failed in Syracuse. There was no hardware failure in Syracuse. That was an underlying technology that became obsolete.
Yeah. What I can't figure out is why they didn't have a changeable modem, though, in there that then could have saved them a lot of money. Now they got to buy all new ones again. But here, Parkion is represented today.
Do you want to wait for your microphone and then repeat yourself, please, Mr. Smith? Thank you.
Am I ready to go? There we go. Bill Smith with Parkion. I can address kind of both those questions. I'm obviously familiar with the Syracuse, and I'm from Seattle. I'm the account rep for the City of Seattle. City of Seattle currently has about 2,300 meters in the city. They started purchasing those meters approximately seven and a half years ago. The, the issue that you hear about in the press is the, is a model, was their early model called the Stelio model, which is not, we don't even sell that anymore. And the characterization of it as a cellular issue is, it's really not accurate. It's an old technology of the carrier called Mobitex that carries the signal for that Stelio product line. And that Mobitex company has started to go out of business. So what's happening in both Syracuse and Seattle, we are in fact changing the modems to the current modems that we're getting in Las Vegas. So Syracuse had, had to upgrade, and so did Seattle to upgrade those modems. I'm sorry.
Bill, thank you, Your Honor. I don't know who controls these mics, anyway.
Obviously, I don't.
Yeah. Bill, what happened in Syracuse, why didn't they have a model that could then be a piece of hardware changed out so they didn't have to buy new?
I'm sorry, maybe I wasn't clear. They do, they are changing the modems. They've actually, as I understand it, that's not my account, but they may actually be going through a whole technology refresh as a result of this, as opposed to just upgrading modems. Their, their machines are old enough to where they probably are looking to refresh them anyway, to change out the entire machine. But the modems are changeable because they're the same models that are in Seattle, which they are changing the modems.
How do you typically select a carrier for your cellular provider?
We have, we have primarily two major, we have, obviously, we have national contract with carriers. But part of our process, when we do an installation, is to test the carrier strength of each of the locations. So we have the two, between the two that we can select, we primarily go with those.
Who are your carriers?
AT&amp;T and T-Mobile.
Okay.
Right. And we, they typically, well, across the nation, they have the largest coverage in the metro areas where obviously where most of the parking is.
I think I just have, I think I just have one more question, Bill.
Sure.
What, Parkion is a French company, founded and...
Yes.
...grown in Europe and has contracts all over the world.
Correct.
Including the United States. What, but now, just a couple of weeks ago, it was purchased by another company, and I can't find any information on this company. ICG just bought Parkion, and Parkion is closely held, I guess, because it's not listed on the stock exchange, or am I wrong?
It's a private company.
Okay.
And I'm not familiar with any purchase agreement or anything that hasn't been released to us.
So Parkion has just sold itself to somebody else?
That, it would probably be an investor group. I would imagine, I believe Barclays, who is one of the major holders, has relinquished some of its holdings in it.
Who do we, how do we know who stands behind Parkion?
Well, I can certainly assure you, we're still very financially strong. In fact, part of that restructuring was some, some debt changes as well. And I can provide any information as necessary through Brandy in terms of the viability and the strength of the company.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Atwell, excuse me, Councilman.
This might help things a little bit, or at least I hope to. With your action today, we're still negotiating a final agreement with Parkion. And what I think I've heard are areas of concerns are the ability to upgrade the system should some of the technology phase out, that we have some role in ensuring that there's adequacy among the communication providers, and that should there be a failure to perform, that there are adequate penalties built into the contract. So with that direction as a part of your motion today, we will build that into our final negotiations with Parkion to make sure that we have our bases covered on the communication front.
Thank you, that does help. Yes, please, Councilman.
In the selection of which direction you were going to go, for example, you had, first of all, let me thank you for your quickness in getting to me the meters that I requested yesterday in the Medical District. There are a few I had some concerns about, and we'll drive that area, and then we'll let you know, but thank you very much. My question is, you made a determination to take these multi-type of meters overtaking our current meters and adapting them to credit cards. And was there a reason why? I mean, because it's a lot more expensive to do the latter?
There was, actually. They had a number of... Okay. Yes, we, we had a discussion throughout the entire process about what was the better choice in general for the City of Las Vegas. While single-space meters do have some advantages, what they can, what they can't now and never will be able to provide are things like the larger screen, where we can get customers to understand in large color instructions how to use the meter. You will never be able to fit a printer in a single-space meter, and there's, there's just, the real estate that a single-space meter has limits the potential of the technology at some point. The other thing is, the meter poles and what we like to call the meter forests on the street make it clutter up the visual appearance of the sidewalk. And by removing a lot of that stuff and replacing it with a single kiosk, as long as you make sure that you have appropriate signage on the street, and that's one of the things we're planning on doing, is replacing all of the meter signage with signage that people can see and can appropriately direct them to the correct, to, to the correct location to pay. But it gave us a lot more flexibility in terms of what we could do in the future and the information we could give to our, our constituents, and, you know, the ease of use and giving them instructions.
And as I looked up and I talked with different people, and I imagine the other council people receive this also, Reno had multi-meters, right? And Reno dropped, Reno dropped them. They didn't have this company, they had another company, didn't they?
That's correct.
And they dropped them. And that was primarily because of the lack of ability of the company itself to do what it was supposed to do. Is that correct?
I think, from what I can tell with Reno, when they, when they made the decision to do what they did, I don't think it was, you know, the, the partial failure of it had so much to do with the fact that they chose a multi-space meter as opposed to single-space. It seemed like what Reno tried to do is integrate space, space sensors and build their own app, do a number of things across the entire, how all the street works, how all the parking works, that no one has been able to figure out how to do, either a single company or group of companies in the entire world to date. So what we are trying to do is to put in the right technology in pieces so that we're not trying to do everything all at once, which is why we didn't, we're not putting in the same type of, we're not putting in the same meter, not the same manufacturer, and we want to take things a little bit slower.
And how about Columbia, Ohio? They took a test period with the multi-meters, which seems to be similar to what we're doing, and then they decided after the test period not to do it, primarily because they were confusing to the people who use the meters. And then I looked, or at least I listened at the beginning when we talked about who was on that committee, and we had people well-versed with the city needs and well-versed in using multi or single meters, but we didn't have much of the public there that uses meters in that committee. And I'm just wondering where that would fall. I'm just wondering if maybe, have we done a good enough job? I shouldn't say that. Have we gone as far as we can go in getting the input from the public that's going to use these? And my concern is based upon Columbia, who took them for a period of time, who used them and then evaluated and found out the customers did not like them, and the, and they were too confusing, and they did, did not use them well.
Councilman, I don't know anything about the trial in Columbus versus, you know, what types of meters they used, how, you know, how everything was set up. I can't speak to that because I'm not familiar with it. I do know, like I said, there are benefits to single space and there are benefits to multi-space. And given the direction that, you know, that the city is looking to take its parking in terms of making things more available, electronic wayfinding, getting information out to our customers, as well as, and it's no small thing that a multi-space meter is the only one that's capable of printing a receipt. That is, that was a very, very large part of the consideration, to be honest, because there are a lot of people that will pay the wrong meter, pay the wrong space, or they want to get reimbursed for their parking. We have a lot of trouble with people that don't have a receipt because we don't allow them to have... them to have one. So it makes, when there are issues or mistakes or anything like that, it makes it very difficult and very cumbersome for our customers to try to navigate through that.
So a lot of people who use meters contact your office because they don't get a receipt?
No, they don't necessarily, but if they had the ability to have a receipt, we could reduce the length of time that we spend with problems because the receipt just basically gives you the answer right there. We do spend a lot of time doing research on who paid what meter. It lengthens the process when there's, when there's a problem.
I, I would just myself prefer, if we could obey this for a month and look into the problems that Columbia faced. I, I think where you're going is absolutely excellent. And I think using the, the technology is great. But I also know that many times, because we want to do this, we fall where, we fall and we fall where it's the consumer who uses it that has the problems, not those of us who make the decision. And I, I would prefer that. So if we vote on this today and I vote no, it's not because I feel that where, where you're going is not right. It's because I feel that we should have more input from the people who use the meters. And these are the people who have contacted me recently, the people who use the meters. And there's a great concern out there about the confusion about other places they've been where they've had these kind of meters. And I would only ask that we take a month and find out what the public thinks about these or trial use or something like that. But thank you very, very much for all that you've done.
You're welcome. Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Thank you. And Ms. Stanley, thank you very much for a thorough briefing in our briefings the, the other day. I want to echo some comments that Jace Radke said earlier this morning on behalf of the mayor's office on, on the radio, that we are trying to make this easier for our residents to use meters. Instead of having to shuffle for change between the seat or in the, in the ashtray, this allows them to use not only debit and credit cards, but coin as well, plus the receipt. So I also think we have worked hard as the city of Las Vegas to create that world-class city that we, we often refer to. And I think this is just another step into bringing us into the future and making it easier for those who want to use those parking meters downtown, making it simpler and easier for them to use. I love the map, the maps. That helps, that will help those folks who are not familiar with downtown tremendously. But also we have to think about the businesses and why we actually have meters out there. We're trying to help our businesses be successful in the downtown area. People need to park real quick, run into a business, get back in their car and take off. That's the idea here. So, and one of the questions on the radio this morning to Mr. Radke was, why do you even have meters? Well, we've got to support those businesses because they employ workers and jobs are our number one concern here in the city of Las Vegas. So I think your team's done a phenomenal job, Ms. Rettwell. I think your team has well, has done so as well in regards to bringing us this product. I'm looking forward to seeing it on the streets and making it easier for our residents to use meter parking downtown. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protan.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd also want to echo what Councilman Ross says. I think this is very progressive. And you, I think you mentioned on one of your slides that this company has over a million, million meters throughout the United States or the world or something. Is that right? Is it three million or a million?
Three billion spaces. Their meters.
Three million.
Their meters.
So I'm assuming those three million, whoever's using those is using them pretty well. So I think this is great for the city of Las Vegas. We're allowing our people to, I mean, the, I don't know how old those parking meters are downtown, but they should go in a museum somewhere. I mean, they're, they're that old. So the one question I do have though is I, you have these big, these screens on these, is there any, have there been a discussion about advertising on those screens when they're not in use? So it generates revenue for the city of Las Vegas? Has that ever come up?
Advertising, advertising is a possibility. We're not planning on doing that right now, but we do have the option to do it, should it be both legal and something that we can work out. But yes, that is actually, that is an option.
Okay. That's something to look at in the future, but I'm, I want to support this. I want to get the city of Las Vegas moving.
Thank you, Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I assume we're contacting all the locksmiths for potential advertising revenue. Maybe the guys that come start your car when your battery doesn't work or something like that. Those would be the obvious, obvious low-hanging fruit there. I just note for the record that the last parking ticket I received was because I did not have any quarters and had to go to an appointment in the downtown area anyway. And that's what I hear from my constituents is that the convenience of being able to swipe and park is considered really advantageous. So understanding everyone's concerns with the, with the technology, potential for obsolescence is a risk anytime I think you embrace technology. I will be voting yes on this and looking forward to swiping and parking.
And for those who don't swipe, I mean, I couldn't agree more with Councilman Beers that I'm a quarter person walking around with my bags. And so if in fact you don't have them, you know, that person's out of luck and is ending up if they're waiting to the last minute to get a ticket. I have a housekeeping question. Who is going to, is that out of the enterprise fund from your department? Or will it be Public Works that's going to come in behind and fill all those holes of all the old meters? Are we putting in funding from Public Works for that? Or does that come out of everything in your department?
That the entire installation, including the work done by any other city department, will be funded by the enterprise fund.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. You actually, I'm glad you asked those questions because that's exactly where I was going as far as the backfill. And you had alluded to, and I'm sorry, I have to step away for a second, as far as when someone asks, as far as change, having the option to do change, what was your response to that? I know the swipe and the technology that's coming online today is something good and that's something that I support at the same time. But for those individuals, such as what the mayor mentioned, as far as don't have a debit card, need to get to an appointment in the downtown community, does this machine have an option for change? I know you mentioned that it does not provide change, but does it have an option to basically place money in the machine versus the, the swipe?
Yes, it will take, it will take coins.
Okay. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I had another question and I remember that I brought it up in the briefing nine days ago. And it was the issue that the mayor and I both ran into during downtown campaigning when professionals and others in the areas, particularly where they're in the conversions, the houses, and they've got staff and they have employees who work there and they have to go out every hour to put in a coin or something. So the idea would be, as I understood it, your answer to me was that a merchant, or there could be one card that would have a coding that, for a particular set of meters, I guess, which would allow a merchant, a professional or a set of employees to be able to, to pay for their parking by the, practically by the day if they had to, instead of having to run out there and pump coins in. So while I heard your affirmative answer on that in the meeting, the private meeting, I'd like to know here on the record if, how that would be addressed and maybe Bill Smith has the answer on how that would work.
Okay. Councilman, the meters do have the ability to take a branded card, parking card, debit card, specific to parking. We don't, I don't believe we have that option included in this, but it is definitely something we can talk to them about. The issue of employee parking and allocating the curb space and making it easier for employees to park is something that we can involve the parking meters in. But it's a little bit more of a, how do we manage the space that we have available to us issue, rather than just, you know, are we putting in meters that have the capability to do that? The answer is yes, but it's more policy decision and how we choose to, and how we choose to manage the curb spaces. Do we put in permits? Do we allow the idea of a parking card? Are we going to allow residents to override the time limits at the, at the meters? Those are all sort of policy questions that we need to solve, perhaps predominantly separately from installing the new meters. The new meters are the technology that will give us the ability to implement what we want to implement, to, to solve the issues that you're talking about. Because the meters we have right now probably aren't going to be able to do that. They're just old, they're obsolete and they don't have the flexibility. So what we want is to put the meters in that have the flexibility to allow us to address those problems. But we as a city need to determine what policy it is we want to put in place and then look to the meters to be able to help us implement the policy.
Well, let's suppose that a advertising agency on Seventh Street, which is the one that raised the issue to me in the campaign, it had the problems and I said I'd work on this with you and I brought it up to you last year, was the issue of, well, permits on the streets. We don't have permits yet. That could have been done without an expensive purchase of, of multi-bay meters. So let's suppose that they put in some money and they want to, and there's a one or two hour limit on the street, they put in three hours worth. Will that meter go broke at that moment that the two hours is up or the one hour is up? Will they lose the money if they put in more?
Again, a lot of that depends on how we program the meters. If we have a two-hour limit that's posted on the street, the meters will only allow a payment of two hours. Again, I refer back to policy. If we want certain groups of people to have different, different privileges at different meters, that's something that can be supported by the technology, but we need to figure out exactly what is in the best interest of the city and the businesses to figure out what that policy is.
Okay. Will a person have to be there at the second that the meter expires its two hours to be able to put in additional two hours?
Are you talking about being able to? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Well, let's suppose they want to extend their stay. There's important reasons why they want to stay.
Mm-hmm.
They don't want a ticket, so they want to pump more money in. What happens in that situation?
You will always be able to add time to the meter.
So that a meter maid won't come along and get mad at you for pumping meter, money into meters if the car hasn't moved?
You will always be able to add time to the meter. Again, that's a policy decision on how we choose to enforce the, on how we choose to put in the enforcement policies for the two-hour limit. Is a two-hour limit appropriate for that meter or should it be four? And again, that's, that's more of a policy question in terms of how we post and how we enforce.
Okay. Let's suppose a person's gone over the meter time. By the way, I think this is wonderful technology. Opposing this is like opposing jobs, which some members of the council basically framed it as jobs versus, you know, progress versus no progress downtown, et cetera. But I think these questions need to be asked. This only became to, came to our attention nine days ago. Let's suppose you, you violate and you are over and you are guilty and that's policy. Can you pay your fine that way so you don't have to have money going through the system back and forth, mail correspondence, especially if somebody out of town? Could you pay the fine through the meters or our system?
That is something that these meters are capable of doing. Again, it's probably something that we would have to add after the fact, but because they are used by the RTC specifically to purchase parking, purchase bus transfers and everything like that, they do have the capability and the software, which would need a little bit of development, to be able to do that. And again, that's one of the reasons why Parkion was the recommendation, because they have existing, existing technology out there that will allow you to make alternate payments besides just pay for parking.
If I might add there in, in comment to your question, which I think is really right on, in certainly areas where we want to keep traffic moving and not sitting at parking meters for lengthy time versus another area where they could renew. Parking meter attendants generally will mark tires so they know you're on your two-hour. What happens? This is about communication to the public, that they know you're in a zone that will be clearly marked, you get one, two-hour period versus wherever you want to keep the turnover moving.
Mm-hmm. And that's one of the primary reasons why we want to replace the signage that goes with the meters. We know that right now, the signage that we have out there does not communicate time limits or expirations very well. And the signage that we want to put in with the new meters will do that. So people will be, so the idea is that people will know when they're parking or when they're driving by, exactly how much time they can park in that space. Right now, you can't necessarily tell that.
So apropos of Councilman Coffin's comment, it is possible in a certain area, you could, as long as you keep coming out every two hours, you have an undetermined length of time, whereas if you're in a highly trafficked area, there would be a sign that says, this is strictly two hours, you're in two hours and you will be fined if you go beyond that. There's no renewal on your meter.
That, that's correct, except in a place where, rather than allowing people to keep feeding the meter, if it's needed, we would lengthen the time of parking allowed. For instance, if we have two-hour meters in a space where there isn't anybody that wants to come and go, well, they probably shouldn't be two hours. They should be four hours or they should be 10 hours and we need to change that. Again, that goes back to policy because if there's a lot of people that want to go back, that want to keep feeding the meter every two hours and there isn't anybody that is not able to find parking because they're coming and going, well, then two hours isn't the right time length for that meter. We need to change it.
And the enforcement is critical.
Yes.
And notifying the public that you will have an X on your left front tire that will indicate to you, you have to move.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess my last question was, well, I might make a statement maybe. These proposed contracts at this point, this, this contract would be in the medical district and in the downtown area. The two areas are Ward One and Ward Three. I don't know, there, I don't know how many meters are in other wards. I think Ward Five has meters and I don't know what the plan is to expand. But the point is that Councilwoman Tarkanian has asked for, I think, a very sensible delay to get some of these questions answered and also some of the affirmative answers in writing. And the, and the manager has said that some of these things can be done easily. Well, I don't see anything wrong with a month delay. It's her ward if she's concerned. I'm not personally concerned about the technology, but I think that we have a, a member of the company here who can give us assurances. Remember, the council was not involved in the selection process. It wasn't involved in the creation of the bids or the selection. So in a sense, maybe these are questions we would have asked, we would have raised because we're dealing with the public all the time. And many of the staff members on that committee do not deal with the public until they hear from us, but then they have to deal with them. And so I'm thinking, what's wrong with giving Councilwoman Tarkanian the month in order that she may have her questions answered and be satisfied? Do I have an answer on that one? Is there, is there a problem from the staff perspective of waiting a month for us to make a decision on this?
That's the wish of the council. If, if you, if the council has additional questions that they would like us to answer and...
I'd like to hear from Ms. Rettwell, any comment, anything in delaying this that would change our vote one way or another?
I mean, obviously, it's, it's whatever the council desires. However, we have been working very diligently to go through a lengthy process. I think Brandy has done an incredible job of putting together parking specifications, trying to move our system forward so that we have a more responsive parking system downtown. And, you know, as it is, it's going to take us nearly six months to have these in place if you made a decision today. And so, you know, it really depends. I mean, I know particularly Mayor and you two, Councilman Coffin, when you first came in, one of the first items you said to me was get this parking thing straightened out. So we've been working really hard to make that happen. You know, we, we do have a vendor in place that went through a rigorous process. I think there are ways through the finalization of that contract that we can address most of these outstanding issues. And, and we're happy to do that. If you want to take action today, all you have to do is weave in, you know, this issue of upgrades, Councilman Coffin, that you brought up, making sure that we, there's not a sole dictation policy by the provider on who the communications company is and that there are penalties if there's a failure there. For the parking meter advertising, we already have a partner in place, Active Marketing. We can pursue conversations with them about taking advantage of the new technology. We can also work with the, with the vendor to talk about the parking card fines that could be paid at the meter. And obviously, we can brief you all on the time limits associated with it. But the bottom line is, we're not going to be able to make those kinds of improvements without a system like this in place. So, you know, it really depends on how quickly you want us to be able to perform and whether or not the answers to the questions are sufficient today to make you feel comfortable making a decision.
And what's before us really is about the selection of this particular company and the order with the multi-bay units.
And the type of unit.
And the type of unit. But we could add to that, that you would respond on these issues and questions because I think they're all really germane and need responses. I mean, they're just, I think what they would be doing is, that would come from the general public, because we're all general public as we use these machines going forward. So you're just saying it would slow us down just another month to...
It would slow us down and, and, you know, obviously there, there could be some unintended consequences associated with the fact that we've revealed, consequences associated with the fact that we've revealed, you know, who's been selected through this request for proposals.
But you don't...
And I imagine anybody who wanted to be in the running may lobby you for the next month and a half, you know? So a lot of things could happen. I just want you to be aware that that could be an outcome, and may slow things down further, potentially. But that may happen anyway.
Your Honor, I can assure you, no one's lobbied me. I don't know about anybody else here. I don't even know any players in this game.
No company, but...
I'm not saying it will, I'm just saying it's a potential.
Madam Mayor, I just want to say that nobody's questioning the company who has gone through a very rigorous, very strong selection process, is the one or not the one, you've selected the one, and nobody's questioning that. My concern is the type of meter we're using. And that's because there have been places in this country, several of them, that have used these types of meters, and they have not succeeded. And then when I asked if our own public had involvement here, there wasn't anybody on the committee that was the consumer reporting. I'm just saying, this is something that we should know from the consumer. And perhaps Councilman Coffin and I are more aware of this, because when there's problems in parking in our ward, I believe they come to us, we pass them on, but we hear of them more often. And I'm just asking not to reevaluate to whom this will be going. So there would be nothing there. I'm just asking, let's reevaluate which way we will go with this company, because you gave us choices, right? Single? Oh, there's only one choice with you? Only multi?
Just a multi-space provider.
Well, then that's different. Then, you know, I wish we had, I'm just going to say this. Since Ward One is one of the three wards impacted by the parking meeting changes to be voted upon in this item, and since the trial use and input by the public has not been a strong point of the basis for this decision, I will vote no, as I said. No question with the person or the company involved, but questioning that this is a very consumer-oriented type of program, parking meters, and I just think, and I feel quite strongly, that the public should be a large part of the decision-making in matters like this. And I think often, I'm not saying our city, I'm saying many cities, have found that they erred in not just taking a little bit more time to see the public situation. And so that's what I want to say. I don't expect others in other wards to maybe understand the situation we're in, and I know where they're coming from, but I feel that I need to stand for the more public input as far as Ward One is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Comments? All right. Councilman Coffin, do you wish to make your motion?
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we obey this item for 30 days or until the second week, second meeting in February. The issue is not the vendor, but the features that may be offered by the vendor, and frankly, I think that our city management is capable of negotiating on our behalf additional features that we've brought up, we've raised, we suggest should be part of it. So I think the issue is simply to put a finer point on the selection, which apparently is a very qualified, the best qualified according to our management. So that's my motion, is to...
That's February 28th, 20th. Thank you.
I want to commend you and thank you. I think we're all very excited about moving forward and the thoroughness of what you've done, but I really do believe some of these issues, we just need some answers back. I'm very concerned, most specifically, about continual pumping into the meters. You end up in certain areas where you want turnover. It's going to be the enforcement of the two-hour. When I have just been around the corner where I can put it in for four, the coins or the card for four hours, six hours, how that's going to be made clear to the public and not just be very confusing. So, you know, while I'd love to move and vote for it immediately, I really do want to hear some answers back on the various questions that have been raised by council. I think they're wise. It has nothing to do with the fact of the reputation of your wonderful company and that it is servicing so well. There's an obvious reason that this is being used so much across the country, that I'm sure ultimately we will get there. But I would like to hear some of the answers, too. So there is a motion here, and... This is a motion to obey to when?
February the 20th.
February 20th. Thank you. And please post. And thank you. I mean, I just think it really is so important to us all that we clean this up. And so the motion carries. This will be obeyed until the 20th of February. And sorry for the delay, but I just think the questions are wise. Won't hurt us.
Madam Mayor, could I ask that perhaps we take some of the general public, people not connected with the city, but people who use the meters, and ask them to use them? And just see if there are any way we might make improvement, what's confusing and what maybe is not confusing, just so that we have the very best we can have? Thank you.
Thank you very much, and apologies on that one. Thank you. We will now move on to item number 31. And Councilman Coffin, I think you asked for this to be poll coining.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Jorge Cervantes, Department of Public Works. This item is an agreement with MB Energy to provide power for the Las Vegas Wash Trail Project. Through you, Mayor, to answer the question I believe that came up, was more related to the project status. The project status, the design is complete. We're generally to put this project out to bid. We expect to start construction early summer, and it'll take about 15 months to complete. The project includes building the trail along the wash, but also two pedestrian bridges, one over Lamb Boulevard and one over Charleston Boulevard.
And the entire project's a 15-month project, and it will hopefully or definitely start this summer?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. Mr. Fowler, that answers your question? Okay. Councilman Coffin?
I move for approval of item 31, Your Honor.
Okay, there's a motion on item 31. Please vote, and please post. Thank you, Mr. Cervantes. That motion carries, and now we will move onto item 35. And report on the status of the Office of Communications, Mr. Wriggleman.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers, for the record, David Wriggleman, Director of Communications. Like my previous directors, my colleagues, over the last few meetings, they gave you status reports on their departments. I'm here this morning to give you a status report on our operation, which of course is the Office of Communications. Rather than telling you what we do, we thought you'd find it more interesting to show you what we do. So we've prepared a brief video presentation, it's only about seven minutes long, at the end of which I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Does that have to do with the fact that many of us sitting here are visual learners?
Exactly.
Thank you.
I've heard...
The primary role of the Office of Communications is to, well, communicate the city's messages, both to the public we serve and to the employees. The office is divided into three main parts: the Public Affairs Division, Art and Design, and Video Services. The Public Affairs team does a lot. It's made up of the city's public information officers. We coordinate the city's media relations, things like organizing news conferences, sending out news releases, and marketing key events and initiatives at the city. The city of Las Vegas is well-known, so in a given year, the office will coordinate about 2,000 media inquiries from news outlets locally and around the world. In addition, the Public Affairs team is responsible for the city's e-communications, and that includes everything from getting out the electronic newsletters from the different ward offices, to managing the content of the city's website, to regularly updating the city's Facebook and Twitter posts. A little trivia, the main page of the city's website, LasVegasNevada.gov, gets about 900,000 hits a year, and the city has some 8,300 social media followers on our main Facebook and Twitter sites. The Public Affairs team also oversees city publications, although most are electronic anymore. They range from communications for the public, to the city-team quarterly employee newsletter, to the city manager's daily employee blog. We handle a variety of other jobs, like providing support to the mayor, city council members, and city staff. We coordinate the ceremonial items at each council meeting, and we maintain the city's master event calendar. Phew. All right. That brings us to the Art and Design Team. This is the city's small but mighty group of graphic artists. This team overflows with creativity. From graphics to greeting cards, flyers to photos, the artists literally create the images that make up the face of our organization. And we're good. And working with the Public Affairs Team, the artists have helped the city win several national awards for a variety of internal and external publications. But it doesn't stop there. The Art and Design Team maintains the graphic elements for city proclamations, posters, logos, letterhead, business cards, banners, certificates, signs, stickers, and vehicle revs. Phew. Last year, the artists had over 800 job requests and were able to complete more than 95% within deadline. Next, we have our Emmy award-winning team in Video Services. These are the folks who keep KCLV TV up and running 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Our team has been nominated for a total of five Emmys over the years, but equally as good, our viewers seem happy with our work. In our annual viewer survey, 85% said the programming on KCLV was either good, very good, or excellent. Based on that survey, we're also confident that more than 170,000 households valleywide watch KCLV, at least occasionally. The KCLV team also helps generate revenue for the city by providing more than $100,000 a year in television production services. The Regional Flood Control District, Cox Communications, The Homeowner Talk Show, and others pay the city to shoot, edit, and dub their programming. This outside business, as part of our business model, isn't huge, but it does help us keep down our internal costs. Finally, all the employees of the Office of Communications play a key part in the city's emergency communications plan. In the event of a disaster, natural or man-made, our role is to get critical and accurate information to the public and to the news media as quickly as possible. We stand up and staff what's known as a Joint Information Center, or JIC. We practice these skills on a regular basis. The JIC is staffed by our team members, other key city employees, and those from other agencies, such as Metro and the Health District. Working with the city's Emergency Operations Center, or EOC, we make sure the public knows what to do in a major emergency, and that the messages from all the different agencies involved are coordinated. Speed is a key element, so our goal is to have the JIC up and running within 30 minutes during workdays and 60 minutes after hours. Virtually all the employees in the Office of Communications have received some federal emergency management training, with some of us getting extensive training at FEMA facilities in Emmitsburg, Maryland, and Anniston, Alabama. As part of our commitment to keeping our city prepared for emergencies, we provide a lot in the way of educational information through TV specials and public service announcements. With the Office of Emergency Management, we also have the LVAlert.com website, the 38 Alert telephone line, and the Southern Nevada OnTheAlert.com emergency notification system. All this, combined with social media, allows us to get out the word on amber alerts, weather warnings, and any trouble within minutes. So all of this is at the heart of what we do. The Office of Communications has a total of 21 employees, down from 26 before the recession, and an annual budget of about $3.2 million, also down by 1% since 2009. So what's on the horizon for the Office of Communications? In addition to what we already do, there are some new focuses. We plan to get the city more involved in social media. Our sites like YourVoiceVegas.com give residents new ways to interact with the city and let us know what they think. Social media won't replace any of our current communication tools, but it will add convenience for our residents, like the telephone, emails, and the website did in the past. In addition, we'll be launching a campaign called "Your City Works For You," which will highlight what the city has done to manage its budget through some tough times and maintain or restore services vital to the public we serve. We want to help make sure the U.S. Conference of Mayors has the best-ever annual meeting in 2013. The mayors from all over the nation will be back in Las Vegas in June, and like the conference we hosted for them in 2006, we know the Office of Communications must play a key role in helping to coordinate the media attention the meetings generate. Our other focus is on how residents will find KCLV in the future. Now, this is the part where it gets a bit confusing. Okay, so here we go. For those with CenturyLink, we'll continue to be Channel 2, and 1002 for those who want to watch us in high definition. For Cox Communications customers, it's not as clear. Those with a cable box can see us on Channel 2. However, if you don't have a cable box and run your cable right into your TV, we're now Channel 89.5. That is, until the end of the year, when Cox plans to move us to Channel 102 and the county station to 104. Still with me? After 13 years of being Channel 2, you can see the identity crisis we face and the large potential of viewers who suddenly can't find their city government on TV anymore. Our focus will be to help educate the public on where their city council meetings, planning commission meetings, live news conferences, and other city-related programs can be found in the future. No small task with limited marketing dollars. Wrapping up, George Bernard Shaw once said, "The single biggest problem with communication is the illusion that it has taken place." With the Office of Communications, we understand Mr. Shaw's point precisely. We want to make sure city communications click with the people we serve.
Great. We get it. Great. We hope we can give you more money, so you can do more things.
Thank you, Mayor. That would be great.
Wonderful report.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we have great hopes for the future. Thank everyone in your department.
Absolutely.
You're so responsive to all of us, and we are really, really grateful. And I can't tell you how excited everybody is in Washington, where the mayors just convened to come out here. They are ready.
You did a good job back there, yeah.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Thank you very, very much, Mr. Wriggleman.
I just wanted to say, Mayor, if I might, it's such a professional, professional group out there, and you do such a great job. Every time I bring anyone in for access or for anything else, they're so impressed, not just with the surrounding, the resources, but mostly by the staff.
And the shows are great, and I agree. We are really gonna, if they change us again, how do they find us? But the artwork, everything, so inventive, so creative, always trying to step ahead. And that's what this city's all about, staying a step ahead. So hopefully more Emmys are in the future, too. We love it. David, thank you. You do a beautiful job, as does everyone in your department. Thank you. Okay, we move on to item number 36. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Submission of an Application to Clark County for Park Projects of Regional Significance Funding for Improvements to Floyd Lamb Park at Tulie Springs, located 9,200 Tulie Springs Road, Horse Rainbow Park, located northeast corner of Horse Drive and Rainbow Boulevard, and to the northwest Equestrian Park, located the northwest corner of Jones Boulevard and Iron Mountain Road. This is, good morning, this is in your ward, Councilman Ross. I see you're smiling. Good morning, Mr. Fag. Nice to see you.
Good morning, Mayor, members of Council, Flynn, Fag, Department of Planning. The request that you have before you this morning is to nominate three parks for funding under the Park Projects of Regional Significance Program. As the mayor has read into the record, the three parks that staff is proposing is Floyd Lamb Park at Tulie Springs, Horse Rainbow Park at the northeast corner of Horse and Rainbow, and the northwest Equestrian Park, which is at the northwest corner of Jones and Iron Mountain. The funding for the program is made available through a 2007 interlocal agreement between the county and the cities here in Clark County, whereby 10% of the revenue that is generated from gaming and hotel taxes is made available for the development of regional parks and regional recreational facilities. The criteria for the funding is as follows: the park must have a minimum of 50 acres or be able to serve a minimum of 1,000 people of capacity; the regional services or activities are not offered by an existing or planned park within five miles; it must serve citizens from multiple jurisdictions; and it also must address a service gap in underserved citizens in unincorporated Clark County. The deadline for the funds is February 1st. We would make the application to Clark County. We anticipate there's approximately $10 million in funding. As I've already discussed, the three parks that we would propose to nominate for the funding would be Floyd Lamb Park, which is located here in this area, approximately...
We're not seeing it yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The overhead, however, that, we're now seeing feet, there we are.
Okay, there we are. Floyd Lamb Park is a 680-acre park here. We completed a master plan for the park in 2007 that was approved by city council. We have approximately $60 million worth of improvements to the park anticipated by the master plan, and we would hope to fund some of those improvements under the grant that's proposed. The next park is Horse and Rainbow Park, that's located just east here of Floyd Lamb Park, again, at the northeast corner of Horse and Rainbow. This park is anticipated of having a total of, I believe, 18 multi-use fields and eight softball fields in addition to park picnic facilities. We have approximately $100 million in improvements proposed for the park over a course of eight phases. And then the final park that we would propose would be the Equestrian Park. The master plan for the Equestrian Park was approved in 2005, approximately $80 million in improvements there for the park, and that's, again, located at Iron Mountain and Jones Boulevard. What we would request is your approval to submit the application for these three... What we would request is your approval to submit the application for these three parks. Again, the total amount is $10 million. If the funds are awarded to the city, we would then come back to you and identify specifically what improvements would be made to each park, and we would request your approval of the application at this time.
And would we know at that time what the cost to the city would be in addition to the received... Do you have an estimate, I mean, looking at the award being made, what the cost, who cares, on the Equestrian Park would be? What would...
Correct. In the master plan that we've done for all three of the parks, we do have an estimate of the cost of the phasing of the facilities and the improvements. And so, again, depending on the amount that's awarded, we would come back to you and identify specifically the cost of the improvements and which ones we would undertake with the funds that are awarded this year.
Okay. Thank you very much. Question, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you. It's, no, I think that the idea of having an equestrian park in the northwest valley is important. I think it's a good idea, because there's only Horseman's Park, I think, down in the county, down near the water treatment facilities, you know, toward the bottom of the wash, bottom of the valley, so it makes sense. It's like 20, 25 miles away. But they are expensive to maintain. So on a regional basis like this, would there be a contribution of support? These things are expensive.
You're correct that there is maintenance costs associated with parks, and especially an equestrian park would need maintenance associated with that. The funds should be available to us each year. However, the funds do not specifically identify that we can use that for maintenance. It's for the construction of parks, and so we would have to allocate from our general fund maintenance to cover the construction that we do at those parks.
How would we keep it from becoming a fiscal black hole out there? The, I know that, and I know the experience that the county has had, they still have problems somehow with the soils under there, because the horsemen are not happy with, you know, what goes on there. Some places, it's different. Now, maybe up in the northwest, it's more stable. Well, it all boils down to money, and our parks are expensive, but we don't want a park like that drawing money away from all our other parks that we currently have. Is there a chance for contributions for maintenance from the county, something like this?
Under the current agreement, I don't believe that there are. We would need to renegotiate the agreement to include funds for maintenance.
Okay. Well, this is sometime in the future, anyway, so I certainly will support the motion.
Madam--
Yes.
Mayor.
I just got the "madam" part.
Oh, I didn't want to, I just didn't want to leave that hanging here. Right now, we have complaints by people who work in parks that we don't have the funding needed for maintenance. We don't have the number of personnel that we need for maintenance. Have you considered all of that, which is based partly in what he's saying? And I'm not against the park. I think it's a wonderful idea. But is there some new way we could earn funding that might help us in maintaining some of this, because we're almost cut to the bone on our other parks? And of course, again, our parks in some of our wards are a lot older, and as they fall apart, it's harder to fix them, and you certainly don't want to start a brand-new, beautiful horse park and not keep it up.
Thank you, Ms. Fratwell.
I can at least relay a little bit about what I know of this, and I think this is kind of brand-new to all of us, and so I think a lot of these issues need to be worked through. The issue you brought up, Mayor, what's, you know, what's our commitment to this, both on a capital side and on an operating side, as you mentioned, Councilman? You know, need, I mean, obviously, there's, these are large, large, large parks that we can break up into smaller pieces, but it also creates a long-term commitment to a large build-out. I think all of those issues are things that, should the county choose to proceed and proceed on one or multiples of these projects that we would submit, that we would need to bring a whole package back to you. I don't, you know, what we have been able to do in some circumstances is we've been able to work with private providers, by the way. We're not currently in the business of managing, you know, equestrian facilities as envisioned in, I think it was JMA, right, who did this plan for us years ago? That's not a business we're in today, just like with the Mob Museum. Museums are not a business we're in today. Oftentimes, we participate in funding them, getting them up and running, like you said, Councilman Coffin, to meet a community need, and then we work with a private sector vendor to come in and actually operate it, so that we're not adding the staff or the obligation for maintenance, for instance. So I think all of those questions, should we be successful in receiving an award from the county, need to be addressed. We're trying to get in under the timeline and make sure the three projects we're proposing you guys are comfortable with. If there's one on here that you're like, "Yeah, we're just never doing that," so take it off the list. This is a great time to tell us. But these are the ones that qualify, and we thought we'd make our best run at it today and get them in and then see where things go. And as we get through that process, we would bring back additional items to get your direction and address some of the issues that were raised here today.
Okay, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor. And just for Councilman Coffin and benefit, Horseman's Park, actually for the entire council, through the mayor, the county has done exactly what Ms. Fratwell had described. They've partnered with the private sector to handle, schedule, and maintain Horseman's Park, so it's a good relationship for the county. And the shooting complex as well, we're working, they're working in that direction as well. But I think more significantly is, you know, the regional significance of all of this. Mr. Fag just described what requirements are in order to be part of this interlocal agreement based on the room tax split we get. And this is just the initial phase of requesting of the county those funds available. So I think we need to sprint and as quickly as possible, Mr. Fag. I think that gallop, is that a better term, Councilman? Full sprint, I don't gallop. Get this done, so we can take advantage of this. I've been working with Commissioner Collins's office in regards to this funding. We have some golden opportunities here and certainly a need out in the northwest, so with that, Mayor and council members, I'm going to selfishly and very excitedly move for approval.
I don't think it's selfish at all, and the LVCVA might just love this happening. So, there's a motion. Please vote, and please post.
By the way, there's a reason it's down by the sewer plant. You know this, don't you?
Yeah, it's a good reason.
It's great fertilizer. And please post, or did I miss it? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Fag. Item number 37 has been obeyed till February 6th, and so item number 38, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the City of Las Vegas Comprehensive Annual Fiscal Financial Report, CAFR, for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2012.
Good morning, Mayor and council. I have the presentation for the year that was ended June 30th, 2012. For the record, my name is Phil Steckinger, Strategic Analysis and Reporting Manager in the Finance Department. Also with me today, I have Tamara Miramontes, who served as the Audit Partner from Cifory Armstrong. I'm going to make a brief presentation. At the end of it, we always have a required communication, and both Tamara, as well as myself, would be happy to answer any questions you would have.
Thank you. Please proceed.
The audit that we had for the 2012 is required to have an independent audit under Chapter 354 of the NRS. Cifory Armstrong and Company conducted this audit for this year. The audit's conducted both in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards. Cifory Armstrong issued an unqualified opinion for the city, and they found no instances of material weaknesses or reporting conditions. I just wanted to throw in one thing, that the city has received a GFOA certificate of election, or, excuse me, for excellence in reporting for the last consecutive 32 years. Although we didn't, we did receive an unqualified opinion, we did have some areas that we need to work upon, and those are reported in the single audit findings. There were four of them, and the first one of them is a CDBG grant, where sub-receivants in the neighborhood stabilization fund were not monitored in according with the OMB Circular 133. The next one that we had is CDBG Report PR 26 was incorrectly stated, both the expenditures and beginning fund balance. And this is one that we've, we've worked with the different departments, and we have on all these, because this is a repeat finding from the previous year. Also, the home investment program, not all site visits were conducted and monitored that was required. And then also, purchasing contracts were issued without verification if the vendors were suspended or disbarred, which is required by GSA federal regulations, both for the SNPLMA grant and also the Homeland Security Grant Funds. As mentioned, we have met with each of the various departments, and they have agreed to put in steps in place to correct these issues going forward. Also, we're going to work more closely with them in this upcoming year to make sure to track those, that progress and that. Wanted to go over just a few highlights with our audit. The first one is our cash investments. This depicts a breakdown of our cash investments that we have by type of funds. We have a shade over $662 million in cash investments. I wanted to put together this next slide, because what we have is a decrease of $137 million from where we were at FY 11, and this is primarily because of the result of capital projects that were put in the ground and that constructed and completed. And in fact, if you look at that decrease of $137.6 million, well, in excess of 90% of that was for these types of projects. Some of these projects include our new city hall, the Neon Museum, or the, known as the Boneyard, the Smith Center for the Performing Arts, and also the Discovery Museum, which is coming online also. Wanted to walk through, the next slide I have depicts what is considered ranging from more restricted funds through unassigned fund balance. One of the things I did want to put this slide in place prior to, because it kind of shows, for lack of a better word, the batting order going from the most restrictive funds that we have to the least restrictive, which is unassigned fund balance. And I can walk through each of these, but in essence, that kind of captures the essence. It goes from a batting order from the most restrictive to the least restrictive. If you look at what our governmental fund balances that we have, we have a shade over $450 million, and about 85% of that amount, roughly $382 million, or $382, $383 million, is either non-spendable, restricted, committed, or assigned, and only just shade less than $68 million is unassigned, which is the general fund. Some of the other CAFR highlights that we have here is changes that we had from the prior year, the governmental net activities. The vast majority of that is made up of capital and our capital assets that we have throughout the city. Also, I had in here also the general fund revenues. As you can see on this slide, our general fund revenues went up by about 1% from the prior year, which is good news. I guess the bad news is it only went up by 1%. Some of the major components that we have in that, roughly 70% of our general fund revenues are made up of consolidated tax and property tax. Consolidated tax went up by about 6% this past year, or about $13 million, but a good chunk of that was offset by a decrease in property tax, which went down by about $6 million. The remainder of the revenues that we have in the general fund are pretty much flat, and therefore you have basically about a 1% increase in revenues from the prior year. Our general fund expenses were very flat for the most part. It went up a shade over $1.5 million. One important thing with the general fund expenditures is there was a year-end adjustment to the rates for benefits to realign our reoccurring revenues with our reoccurring expenditures, which is very much a positive, but that, in essence, was very flat. Also, I guess accordingly, the general fund fund balance was relatively flat for the current year also. That concludes my presentation, and before I turn it over for questions, I did want to just have one final item. Tammy earlier talked about that it was kind of a challenging audit period, which it was. A couple reasons for that being is that we had the conversion of a new computer system this year, or upgrade, and that was difficult. And I guess somewhat like sports teams, we had over seven people in our department that are integral to the audit that missed at least a week, sometimes as much as a month, due to sicknesses and surgery. And I, on that note, I wanted to thank the other folks that we have in our department for stepping up, and also Cifory for their patience in this. And in particular, I wanted to recognize Joe Williams and also John Fedor. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. We applaud the efforts that were made and know of some of the reasons why that would have happened, so thank you and thank the department, please. So please reintroduce yourself, if you would, for the record.
I am Tamara Miramontes, the engagement partner with Cifory Armstrong. And I do have just a couple of other items just to communicate with you. As part of our auditing standards, we like to communicate certain things. I also do have them in a letter that we can provide to you. There were certain, there was one change, actually, in accounting standards that happened during the, it was a very minor one. Last year, you'll probably remember, there was GASB 54, which changed the fund balance. This year is GASB 63, and it's just changing really some terminology items. So where things used to be statement, or there were net assets, now things are net position. It's positioning for GASB 65, which will be coming out, with there's certain deferred outflows and deferred inflows, and that will be a much more significant change than this one, but there was a minor change in terminology that you probably will note throughout this year. Additionally, as far as the estimates that the city management makes, we really think that the ones related to risk management, contingent liabilities, and OPEB-type items are really where they make most estimates. Other than that, they're really, things aren't really estimated. They're pretty hard, hard, fast numbers. And then as far as financial statement disclosures, to point you out to the ones that we believe are most significant, the ones I think that the users of your financial statements would be most interested in would be the debt note as you are going out for any refunding or anything like that. Your debt note is very significant, as well as the risks, your contingent liabilities, your OPEB, all those, the liabilities that you have out there in the future that are addressed in those that I think users of your financial statements would be interested in. Other than that, I think Mr. Steckinger has presented everything that I need to present.
Thank you very much. Comments, questions from council? I would entertain a motion to accept the report here.
Motion to accept the report.
There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. And if I may, the required communication, similar, we'd like to submit that into the record, which Ms. Miramontes had just read.
Okay. If you'll give it to the clerk. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And we now move on to item number 39, Discussion for Possible Action to Appoint a One Part-Time Hearing Commissioner Relative to Ordinance Number 5962 at $50 an hour with no benefits from general fund, Mr. Tarwater. Is there, well--
Well, Mayor, I see our court administrator, Matt Fisk, here in the audience. If you'd--
That would be fine. Thank you. If you would come forward then. Good morning, and please state your name for the record and make--
Matthew Fisk, Court Administrator. Good morning. And I'm here really for questions. We carried out an interview panel a couple of weeks ago and submitted three names to Honorable Mayor and City Council, and it's your selection.
And the position, could you describe what the position actually does? How often you meet?
Yes. This position works four days a week throughout the day. It's, we have, we, it's a part-time traffic commissioner position. Handles traffic matters under all traffic codes and has the authority of a judge. The pay is $50 per hour. It's general fund funded, and we do have a current person in the other half of this position. Rather than taking on the task of requesting an additional judgeship, we've taken this route. It's a more economical and efficient way to go.
Thank you. What are the requirements of the individual to have put their name in, and how long is that seat occupied before they are renewed? And how long is that seat occupied before they are renewed?
The, the position goes into perpetuity. The requirements, that is a really good question. I, I can give you some of the requirements, but I'm not sure I can exhaust the list. Basically, they need to hold the requirements that a, a judge would hold, or an alternate, alternate municipal court judge. They have to be in good standing with the bar. They have to have the knowledge, skills, and abilities that would qualify them to make those difficult decisions on the bench and demonstrate...
No law degree, college degree, either of those required?
They would have to have a law degree and, and be in good standing with the, with the board, yes.
Thank you very much. Whoops. Any questions, comment?
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I looked at a list. Is this the position that three names have been submitted to us before, I believe?
That's correct.
Yeah, they're excellent candidates.
Yes, all three are candidates.
As far as I can see. Have you made a selection yet, or are you, are we waiting for us to make a selection?
Actually, yeah, the selection is made by the City Council. We had several applicants. We culled through a list of, I believe we had about 15 people. And we, we would be happy with any of these three candidates. There were several other well-prepared candidates, but these were the most well-suited for this position at this time.
And these three were the names in the packet given to us all back a week, 10 days ago?
Yes.
I believe.
I'd like to commend the courts for making a decision like this instead of asking for another justice, because that is an expensive proposition. And here, this person will not require all of the overhead that a judge should be entitled to.
Correct. In addition to the, the salary savings, benefit savings from the position itself, there are the other things that go along with hiring another judge, like the, the office space and the support staff, or absorbing that. Also, I need to commend the city attorney's office. During the last budget cycle, this, this legislative group approved funding for an additional deputy city attorney and support staff member, and they are helping us to handle more traffic matters more efficiently also. This is what enables us to do this.
Where would it reside? Because the Regional Justice Center is pretty crowded right now.
This person would share office space on the first floor with the other part-time traffic commissioner.
Okay.
So, we already have the existing space. And we are funded for this. These are not additional dollars. This is a replacement.
Thank you very much. Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mayor. At, I want, we had great applicants for this position, and I have had discussions with the court, as you probably know. One, one extremely qualified individual did stand out. Do want to thank the other applicants who applied for this position, for the benefit of the City of Las Vegas. But my motion would be, Mayor, to appoint Ann Elworth Winner to this position with the court. She's well-qualified, comes highly recommended, and that's my motion.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, and please vote and please post. And that motion carries unanimously. I'm sure we will be in touch and so notify as well. But if you will notify Ann Elworth Winner.
Elworth Winner.
Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your support and for reviewing this.
Thank you for what you do. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number 40. Our 62013 discussion for possible action regarding a resolution consenting to the undertakings of the City of Las Vegas redevelopment agency in connection with Quick Start Program QSP agreement between the RDA and FAEC Holdings will rule LLC owner and Phantom Entertainment LLC tenant and QSP participant located at 450 Fremont Street, number 370 to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the RDA. This is in Ward 5, Councilman Barlow's Ward. And this item is related to this morning's redevelopment, item 6, RA 52013. Ms. Darnett.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, members of council. Bill Arndt, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This item, as the mayor indicated, is related to redevelopment agency item number six. We did hear a discussion on the item. It is part of our Quick Start Program, which is for helping businesses with the interior of spaces, retrofitting them, making it easier to get through our design review process at the city, and then getting them open for business. The client is eligible for a, the grant of $50,000, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you so very much. I would like to move to follow status recommendation for approval subject to all conditions on this item. That will be my motion.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, please vote and please post. Thank you very much. That motion carries. We'll move on to item number 41. Our 72013 discussion for possible action regarding a resolution consenting to the undertakings of the City of the Las Vegas redevelopment agency, RDA, in connection with the Commercial Visual Improvement Program, CVIP, agreement between the RDA and ProView LLC owner located 509 South 7th Street to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the RDA. This is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin's Ward. Note, this item is related to the redevelopment agency item this morning, number 7, RA 62013. Mr. Darnett.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, unlike the prior item, is part of our visual improvement program, VIP, where we help property owners and businesses in the redevelopment area improve the exterior of their property. The client is making a substantial investment of approximately $80,000 in exterior improvements, and is eligible for a matching grant of $40,000, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you very much. Ms. Darnett, any questions, comments? Councilman Coffin?
Your Honor, I move for approval of this item.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote and please post. That motion carries. We'll move on to item number 42. Our 82013 discussion for possible action regarding a resolution consenting to the undertakings of the City of Las Vegas redevelopment agency, RDA, in connection with the Commercial Visual Improvement Program, CVIP, agreement between the RDA and ProView LLC owner located at 1111 South Casino Center Boulevard to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the RDA. This also is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. And note, this item is related to the redevelopment agency, item 8 this morning, RA 7-2013. Ms. Darnett.
Your Honor, to speed things up, could we do 42 and 43 together, although they will take separate motions?
I think let's do them separately.
Okay.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor. We heard discussion on this item. It's to renovate a building near Casino Center between Charleston, California. The applicant is putting a substantial investment, over $200,000, in each building. You see there, the two buildings on the overhead. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin? This is the first of the two buildings that we're looking at.
Yes, this parcel at 1111 and the additional application right next door are really essential to the improvement of the appearance along the Casino Center Boulevard, south of Charleston. And it's right across the street from the Brett Wesley Gallery, so we have a, a major improvement to the area to go along with Mr. Wesley's, you know, investment. So, I would now move for approval of item 42.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote and please post. That motion carries. Item 43. R 92013 discussion for possible action regarding a resolution consenting to the undertakings of the City of Las Vegas redevelopment agency, RDA, in connection with Commercial Visual Improvement Program, CVIP, agreement between RDA and ProView LLC owner located at 1115 South Casino Boulevard to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the RDA, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Note, this item is related to this morning's RDA, item number 9, RA 82013, Councilman Coffin. Oh, Mr. Darnett.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is similar to the preceding item. It's for the adjacent building at 1115 South Casino Center Boulevard. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Mr. Coffin, Councilman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move for approval of item 43.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote and please post. And that motion also carries. And we will now move on to item, agenda item 44. Boards and Commissions, Vance, item for possible action, City of Las Vegas Citizens Advisory Committee to the Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency. Michael Corinthway, Ward 5, term expiration November 2, 2012. Councilman Barlow.
Yes, Mayor. And thank you, Council, for working with me on this item. I had a number of people that I was interviewing, and at this time, I would like to move that we approve the appointment of Jermaine Dykes, who is a lifelong resident of Las Vegas and of Ward 5. And he has a number of degrees, to include an MBA in his specialty. He's working very diligently in the community, and he wanted to get more involved, and I thought that this would be a great opportunity for him to, in fact, cut his teeth on a very good board that will not only help the City of Las Vegas, Ward 5, and, and him professionally as well. So, my appointment will be for Jermaine Dykes.
And that would be a J or a G for Jermaine?
That is J E R M A I N E Dykes, D Y K E S.
Wonderful. Thank you. There's a motion, please vote and please post. We welcome him to this. Congratulations. Wonderful. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 45, and recommending committee bill eligible for adoption at this meeting. This is bill 2012-58. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilman. Bill number 2012-58, First Amendment. In order to update the city's regulations regarding tavern limited license, expand the prohibition on restricted gaming for tavern limited licenses, appropriate for other related matters. Your Honor, as sponsor of the bill, we have prepared at your request a proposed Second Amendment. Mr. Steed is here to explain it. As you know, this bill deals with two things. It deals with tavern limited licenses, and it deals with what you can and cannot do in an entertainment district. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Steed to explain the Second Amendment.
Thank you very much.
The Second Amendment, the proposed Second Amendment takes out the provisions that defined and explained the circumstances of the outdoor entertainment facility. I can't remember what was the exact name of it, but the, the type of license that would allow kind of a downtown area where, where liquor could be served. There were concerns about how far that would extend into other existing establishments. And so, rather than try and do it all in this bill, we have taken that portion out. This would continue to authorize the expansion of the eligibility of, within the entire downtown Centennial Plan area for tavern limited licenses. And it also further details the kinds of conditions that can be imposed upon one of those licenses. But we're, we took the outdoor entertainment complex language out, and we'll come back at some appropriate time and address those issues.
All right. Thank you. And this is only in the downtown RDA or out in the new RDA 2 as well?
It's not really related to the RDA. It's the, it's the downtown Centennial Plan area.
Thank you very much. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor. Move for approval subject to all conditions.
That'd be Second Amendment?
Second Amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote and please post. That proposed Second Amendment carries. Thank you very much. We will move on to item 46, bill number 2012-59. Councilman Barlow, you wish to have the bill read, please?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill 2012-59, First Amendment. In order to update the city's privileged licensing regulations regarding licensing and suitability review and in the investigation process, appropriate for other related matters.
Move for approval subject to all conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. Please post. We will now move on to item number 47. Items 47 through 49, bills 2013-1 through 2013-3 are eligible for adoption at a later meeting. We will now move on to new bills. Item 50. Item 50, bill 2013-4 will be heard at the recommending committee meeting Tuesday, February 5. City Attorney, would you like to read these bills, please?
I'll be happy to, Your Honor. Bill number 2013-4, in order to adopt a new trails requirement of the Las Vegas 2020 master plan to provide for other related matters.
Boy, that was brief. These new bills will be assigned to Councilmen Anthony Barlow and Coffin. We will move on to item 51 has been stricken, so we will recess till 1:00 for lunch. See you then. Have a nice lunch. All right, everyone. We will reconvene from recess. And we will start with item number fifty-two. For possible action, any items from the afternoon session that council staff and/or applicant wished to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward, acted upon at this time. Mayor Proten?
Thank you, Mayor. Items fifty-three through fifty-six, EOT four six nine nine eight, EOT four seven zero zero zero, EOT four seven zero zero one, and EOT four seven zero zero two. Applicant owner Charleston Towers LLC, two point oh five acres at northwest corner of Charleston Boulevard and Tenth Street. The applicant has asked this be obeyed till April seventeenth, two thousand and thirteen. And item number sixty-seven, SUP four seven three two two, appeal of the denial by the planning commission applicant Shamra Yan. Owner John Napoli, one seven three seven South Las Vegas Boulevard. Applicant has asked that be obeyed till February twentieth, two thousand and thirteen, and that will be my motion.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Coffin?
Your Honor, on the motion, I don't want to complicate it too much, but Mr. Garcia stands in front of us to take two minutes of our time, so that we don't just simply obey fifty-three through fifty-six without an explanation, because there is tremendous progress being made. Could we perhaps, out of order, take this after your vote? In other words, take it out of the motion? I don't want to overcomplicate this. You're the chair, so you tell me the best way to do it.
He can speak to do it.
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you speak to the motion, then, right now? Thank you very much, Councilman Coffin. Mr. Garcia, state your name, please, for the record.
I'm Mr. Council George Garcia, seventeen eleven Whitney Mesa Drive.
I'm sorry, Mayor. He needs his mic on.
It's not on. Yeah, excuse me. Yeah, George Garcia, seventeen eleven Whitney Mesa Drive, Suite one ten. A pleasure to be before you. We've been working with Councilman Coffin's office to basically redo the design for this. We've made substantial progress. We're bringing the height of the building down. We're adding more amenities, more character to the building, and creating it with a couple of different options. One, which is essentially ground floor, you know, retail, then with apartments above. In this particular case, Scheme One, you can begin to see the layout of how the apartments wrap around the exterior of the building. This is, this here is gas wrapping around on Tenth. And you can see, as we go up, we have then the pool deck with the units wrapping around it on the upper level. Then in the, in the other scheme alternative, basically, we have two schemes at the ground floor level, where there's retail, of course, on the street fronts. In this instance, we have basically designed for office as well as retail. And then on the second option, we have basically a larger box for retail that could be grocery anchored, and then we have the retail again on the Tenth Street. So we have two designs for different options on the ground floor for retail tenants, and then the upper levels apartment with the amenities. And with that, Mayor, just briefly, and we'll be back with staff to submit a site design review, to bring this forward to staff and to the Councilman's office, and then before the planning commission.
Question, if I may, Councilman Coffin?
Well, George, you didn't bring the most important drawings, which were the elevations, which would show the character, the complete change of character in this project, which is important, because the original design, a fourteen-story building and an eighteen-story building, very close to residences, was approved despite the objections, serious, strong objections of the neighbors. And the council did that seven or eight years ago, and it's, you know, been cooking for a long time. But really, this is a significant move on the part of these landowners, to show that they now understand that it was important to hear of those neighbors back in the day. And so this is a rewrite, a revamp, a complete new look. And I just want to applaud you and your clients for doing this. And so I still think that a separate motion will be required, well, actually...
To obey at this point, April?
Yeah, we're going to have to have a request, a motion. What is that motion as it stands?
It was to obey fifty-three through fifty-six until April seventeenth, which gives them time...
That still works for you.
That's perfect. And just to clarify, this will be reduced to six stories.
And I wanted to ask the famous question, you know how passionate I am about a grocery store. With the revised footprint in your last diagram, is that box size for a larger grocery store, or a more diminutive one?
Well, it's about thirty-five thousand square feet.
What is the standard?
That would have gone back to kind of more your grocery anchored, typical grocery stores of a different era. Now we have the super-sized grocery stores that are probably twice that size. But I would call that a more typical grocery store size for an urban, for an urban setting, not your super-center size.
More like a Smart and Final, or Ralph's, or something of that nature?
Yeah, those types of grocery stores, certainly, yes.
Okay.
So April seventeenth, Your Honor, we'll hear a lot more about this. And I think the council will be surprised, and the neighborhood will be grateful.
Sounds wonderful. We have a motion, please vote. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. And please post. And that carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item fifty-seven. This is in Planning, VAR four six nine four oh, abeyance item. This is a public hearing. Applicant owner Nelka Meteva, for possible action on a request for variance to allow a zero-foot corner side yard setback, where fifteen feet is required for an existing carport addition. Point one eight acres, eighteen oh nine South Valley View Boulevard. This is in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian's Ward. It's a public hearing. I declare it open. Is the applicant present? You may come forward. Please state your name. And if you have any, I see you're not carrying anything, but we have pictures. Okay. Would you introduce yourself, so we have it for the record, please?
Nelka Meteva, eighteen oh nine South Valley View Boulevard.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item? It is the setback, and this is the home, and wanting a carport.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I'd just like to say, I think that wall looks real nice. If it's substantial, I mean, that's a real improvement. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? I will close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tarkanian?
Yes.
Your microphone.
Microphone. This young lady is here today, and I've told her she doesn't need to be scared of any of us, because she was a little concerned during the planning commission meeting. We were able to meet yesterday. I also have met with Flynn. And I'm going to move for approval with conditions, and those conditions I've discussed with Mr. Flynn. And I would like you to read them, however, please, just to make sure they're accurate in the records.
Certainly. We would propose to make a change to Condition Number Two, to read as follows. All necessary building permits shall be obtained and final inspection shall be completed in compliance with Title nineteen and all codes as required by the Department of Building and Safety within one hundred days. So we're making a change, giving you a hundred days to get your building permits. And then I would add a sentence to that as well, that says the perimeter wall shall be modified to conform to the requirements of Title nineteen. And so that would be the change to Condition Number Two that we would propose. Just for the record, the height of the front wall is in conformance. It can be no more than five feet, and we looked at it, and that's what it is. However, the top three feet needs to be fifty percent open. Based on the construction of the wall, that should be fairly easy for the homeowner to modify. And so, again, that needs to be taken care of within one hundred days from the date of approval.
Do you understand those?
Yes.
And you have a copy, so that you know what you're complying with?
No, but I'll get a copy.
Okay.
I'll find one.
If you would, so she knows specifically.
The applicant will receive an approval letter with the condition.
Okay. Thank you. Councilwoman?
He will send the letter to you, and the conditions will be in there. And they cover the two areas. As I said, we will have a fine because of building so much before having permits. And we will also have that minor adjustment, or smaller adjustment, that he said about the wall. Yes. And the reasoning for that is, we need to have, so that firemen or policemen, if there's an emergency or anything, have some visibility into that part of the yard. I thank you for coming. And then I told you, next time you come, come a little earlier, and we can work it out more quickly. And you have told me personally, but would you on the record give the answer to, do you comply with the conditions that we are talking about on the record? Yes, I do. And she's saying, yes, she does. Okay. Sounds like I do. Any other questions that you have for us? No, I don't. Thank you so much. See, aren't we easy to work with? Such a charming group, right? At this point, yes. Yes. But anyway, so I move to approve with all conditions as stated. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Motion carries. Hundred days. Go for it.
And if you have any questions, don't wait, or don't do anything. Excuse me, let me, can you stop a minute? If you have any questions, or anything comes up you're not sure about, please contact either Flynn or myself. All right? Just do it before you do anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Item, now, let's see. We'll read these both. Item fifty-eight and fifty-nine, EOT four seven six eight six, extension of time on an approved site development plan review, SDR three nine eight one eight, to add seventy-three hundred ninety-nine square feet, including a third floor with deck, to an approved thirty-seven thousand one hundred and fifty-one square foot sexually oriented business, and for parking lot modifications. Number fifty-nine, EOT four seven six eight seven, extension of time of an approved special use permit, SUP three nine eight one nine, for a proposed seventy-three hundred ninety-nine square foot expansion of an approved thirty-seven thousand one hundred fifty-one square foot liquor establishment tavern. The applicant owner is D. two eight oh one Westwood, Inc. at Al, at twenty-eight oh one Westwood Drive. Staff recommends approval on both items, and both items are M. industrial. These items are in Ward One, Councilwoman Tarkanian, and are not public hearing items. Is the applicant present?
Yes. Good afternoon. I'm Winston Henderson, architect. On behalf of the applicant, fifteen fifty-five East Flamingo Road, we have reviewed staff conditions and recommendations. We agree with those conditions and recommendations, and request your approval.
Thank you very much. Mr. Fag, please.
Just please note for the record that this extension of time will be for a period of two years.
Okay. Councilwoman, please.
I would move to approve with all conditions that have been set there already.
And are so accepted, as you said, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. Motion carries. We were able to do those both together?
There should be separate motions, Mayor.
Okay, so we will have another on item number fifty-nine. Councilwoman, please.
I move to approve with all conditions, and ask you to say that you agree.
We do agree.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. And please post. And that motion also carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we will now move on to item number sixty. This is RQR four seven one three nine. This is a public hearing. Applicant owner Lorenzi Many Storage, for possible action and a required review of an approved variance, V oh oh eight six dash nine five, which allowed an off-premise sign to be raised to a height of fifty-five feet, and allowed the sign to be hundred and fifty feet from the residential zoning district, where three hundred feet is the minimum separation allowed at thirteen ninety-nine North Rainbow Boulevard. C one Limited Commercial. This is in Ward Five, Councilman Barlow. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, Your Honor. Members of the council, Chris Kemfer here on behalf of the applicant. We very much appreciate staff's recommendation of approval. We accept staff conditions, and we would ask for your approval as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item? Please come forward. All right. Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion, Councilman Barlow?
Yes, there is, Mayor. And I had an opportunity to speak to Mr. Kemfer in regards to his client and the request. I do have one... client and the request. I do have one question. This is more so to staff, as far as the RQR, Flynn. The five-year, there was a five-year required review. Why is that in place? What is the nature of the review?
In the section of the code that deals with off-premise signage or billboard signs, it says that city council may apply a required review to the signs. In no case shall the review be any more frequent than every three years. It has been the position of council to have a required review on all billboard signs. Typically, in the past, we've had those on either a three-year or a five-year required review schedule, because this particular sign has been in place for as long as it has. I believe it was first constructed in nineteen-ninety-five or nineteen-ninety-six. It's within an area that's generally developed. Staff is recommending approval with a five-year review period.
Okay, so the next time that this item will come back before us will be five years from now?
Yes, in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. So, having said that, and providing me that level of clarification, I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item subject to all conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. And please post. Thank you. The motion carries. And Councilman Ross wanted to comment.
I do have a comment, and Councilman Barlow, and through the mayor, to the rest of the council, there are a significant amount of billboard signs, but we just won't see substantial change around them. And I think that one day, we're going to be having this discussion. I know, Mr. Fag, you and I have had this discussion in regards to those billboards that, you know, don't necessarily need a required review, because nothing is going to change around them. And this is a good example of one of those billboards, where in other parts of the city, there are billboards where things will change around them, and we'd like to see things change around them. But I think, as a council, we're going to be discussing this one day in regards to not requiring some of those signs. May be difficult to identify, Mr. Fag, but I think is, we've had, because we've talked about that, too. I think we can, though, identify the billboards in the city that don't need reviews. That would free up your staff's time, certainly the applicant's time, and the sign industry as a whole would benefit from that. So, I just wanted to put that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Kemper.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number sixty-one. GPA four-six-five, four-six-five-six-five. This is public hearing. Applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for possible action on a request to adopt an updated Trails element and revise the two-oh-two-oh master plan. This is in all wards. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Mr. Fag, this is your ballgame.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of council. We have before you this afternoon requests to update our Trails element. One of the most significant changes that we're making to the Trails element since it was last updated is to actually take two documents that were separate before. We had a separate transportation Trails element, which particularly addressed pedestrian sidewalks, and then bicycle trails, and then we had a recreational Trails element, which addressed our equestrian Trails and our multi-use equestrian Trails. What we've done is combine those together into one document, which should make it a lot easier for the public, and for staff, and for everyone in general, to understand really the purpose of the elements, the standards, and how those two types of Trails work together. So, that's one of the more significant changes that we are making to the element itself. In terms of some of the other changes that we've made to the document, as we've built out a number of Trail segments over the years, one of the things that we've discovered is that as things have changed a little bit with development patterns, we had a couple of Trail segments that were Trails to Nowhere, and so what we're proposing to do is to eliminate those, and then also make some revisions to certain Trail alignments along sections of the road where it made more sense in order to establish the proper connections between the Trail and our activity centers. There are not any significant changes in terms of the number of Trails or the mileage of Trails that we're proposing. One of the things that we are doing, however, is we are referencing the Vegas Valley Rim Trail, which is a project that has been under development by the Southern Nevada Regional Planning Coalition through their Trails Work Group, and something that we hope to see the Coalition Board adopt here in the near future. What that will do is establish a Trail Network, basically a ring around the valley, and the idea is that our individual Trails from the different municipalities, City of Las Vegas, Incorporated Clark County, City of Henderson, North Las Vegas, will all tie into the Vegas Valley Rim Trail. And so, that was something that was very important for us to include in this update of the Trails element. Again, this is primarily an update of the element, bringing two separate documents together to make it easier for folks to understand, and also to coordinate the activities in terms of construction standards, and we would request your support and approval of this item. I also need to note that we had an item on the agenda this morning, under the bills. It was Bill number, item number fifty, I'm sorry, Bill number twenty-thirteen-dash-four. As part of the approval of this item, we also have a bill to adopt it as part of the master plan, so those two items are related. I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that.
Was there any particular area where the Trails to Nowhere are located? Are they out in Ward six, or where are they?
Primarily up in Ward six is where we had a number of those situations occur. Again, as development patterns changed over the years, and as we developed Trail segments, there were a couple of places where we ended up with a Trail dead-ending into nothing, and so those were the areas that we wanted to clean up.
So, does that mean you remove what's been done to them, or you just vacate them from the plan?
We basically eliminated that alignment. We didn't have to go back and take out any Trail or things like that, but rather, it was a designated alignment that didn't go anywhere.
Okay, thank you. Any comments, questions? Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to clarify that I think two-seventy-eight enables us to include a recreation element in our master plan, but does not require us to include any of those elements that are listed there in A through S. Those are all may, rather than must, I think. Is it true?
There is some confusing language in Section two-seventy-eight relative to counties, and specifically municipalities in counties with a population over seven-hundred thousand. It tells us that we have to address all of those elements, and then goes into may include, and goes into specificity about some of those elements. So, admittedly, it is a little bit confusing, but it does identify nineteen separate elements that should be included in a master plan.
But it says may include, rather than must include.
In terms of the specific requirements, yes.
If I may, I think you have to have the elements. You just, it just tells you, it doesn't give you a verbatim list or an exhaustive list of everything that must be within that element, but it tells you must have the elements.
And it requires a plan.
Can we have, yeah, it does require a plan, but it isn't, but as I'm reading it, it is, it may include any of these. So, if I could get perhaps council in the next week to get with me and point out to me where the must is, that would be probably the way to resolve that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Councilman Beers may very well be right. It's one of those elements of a community that you ought to have, and I suspect that we're encouraged to have it. Those of us who sit on Regional Planning Coalition have been watching this unfold over quite a long period of time, and probably everyone on the council knows that the Rim Trail will be about a hundred-and-thirty miles long, I think, circling the valley, which is going to encompass existing as well as, you know, soon-to-be-built rights-of-way. I mean, this is going to be something where people will actually find another reason to come to Las Vegas. It actually will have a tourism element. Then you get to where you want to cross the valley, and that's where the municipalities come in, and our residents. So, while a tourist may want to circle this valley and knock that off on their list of mountains to climb and Trails to walk, the, there's something here for the local person. And by doing this, just as the Arginal Regional Planning Commission Coalition has made sure that all of these Trails will meld together, so they have an unbroken string, you can walk, I suppose, for weeks without covering the same ground twice, and that becomes a really important selling point for people who are thinking of moving here, and that they're going to say, well, this really is not just casinos, not just buffets, something for the outdoor person, or the person who wants to reform their life. Really, you know, easy Trails, tough Trails, about everything. I suspect the scouts will love it, too.
Thanks, Greg.
You know that's coming.
Thanks, Greg.
Anyway, I certainly wholeheartedly support this change. Thank you.
Thank you. It is public hearing. Please state your name.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Hodges. I think putting in the Trails, especially walking Trails throughout the entire, you know, community, and connecting with the other cities in the county, and so, that's a beautiful thing, especially when it go over the highways, you know, where the pedestrians and the traffic, you know, kind of run in each other. So, like you said, as the years go by, you can be able to circle this whole valley pretty much, you know, no one person, but a group of people, they got also used for a, what do you call that, the maritime, you know, for people running and going, walking. So, sometimes you get, these things can be used for multiple purposes, and maybe, you know, a city in there can make a little extra change, depending on the situation, especially when you don't have to be involved with, you know, traffic and all that kind of stuff. Does that make a little sense? And especially if he's a walking Trail rather than a horse Trail. I'd bring my horse if I could, but since I can't, you know, we stick with pedestrians. Thanks.
With a diaper.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Please.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. Councilman Beers, this is a must, not a may. When the I- ninety-five freeway was put in, back in, go back in the mid-nineteen-seventies, they promised certain things. That was a promise. They put in that I- ninety-five Trail, and I'm highly upset that it, at the Planning Commission, that it wasn't included in all this. So, I met with Director, with Finn's staff, and they went through the thing, and it's there. So, that, that's where it is, and it is being addressed. But still, when you go back, clear back, when they put that I- ninety-five, it wasn't even supposed to be there, if you remember that, Councilman Coffin. And they promised us a lot of things. Number one, it's the only bridged freeway section that I know of in the western United States, and it's bridged for one reason, because they promised us at that time that they wouldn't split up our neighborhood. And that's why, that's the only, it's not a levied system. It's the only bridge system, and that's the reason why. And there's a bunch of promises on that thing. And that I- ninety-five Trail was to connect with the Howard Hughes Trail, and Howard Hughes promised us that Trail because a Trail, if the state allowed him to buy the seventh, the sixth or seventh casino, he would, said that he would fund a Trail out to his Bonnie Springs Ranch, which he owned at that time. And he did everything that he said that he would do. And this I- ninety-five Trail, if you go way back in the books, it connected with the Charleston Court, the took us out there, for various reasons and expansions over the years that got eliminated. But still, this is not a may, it's a must, as far as I'm concerned. There was promises made, and a promise made ought to be a promise kept. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
By the way, Finn's staff does a nice job on this. He really does, and they keep up on it. And the technical stuff that they've got in that office is just absolutely awesome. Awesome. They can, it's a photo journey through the thing. And the other, one last thing. If you ever want to take a nap, Finn has the most mind-boggling chairs up there in his office that you can imagine.
They must come from Google. Google has their own nap chairs. I saw them. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? I'll close the public hearing. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to follow Planning Commission and staff's recommendation for approval.
There's a motion. Please vote. And please post. Now, the one I saw, Google has a nice little cap over it. It'd go dark fifteen minutes, power nap. So, the motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number sixty-two. SUP four-seven-two-three-three, public hearing. Applicant Steve Sevillah. Owner, Rancho Self-Storage LLC, for possible action on a request for a special use permit for an existing mini-storage facility with rental vehicles to be displayed in public view at thirty-two-ninety North Rancho Drive, C two, general commercial zone. This is in Ward five, in Councilman Barlow's Ward. The staff recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends approval. Staff, could you speak to why the denial, please?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. In our Title nineteen, our zoning code, it states under the standard conditions for a mini-storage facility that you cannot display rental vehicles. However, you can apply for a special use permit. The applicant is requesting to display five vehicles. Planning Commission has recommended approval of the request.
Okay, thank you very much. Please, please announce yourself, and then please speak.
Sorry. Mac McKnight, four-oh-nine Firestone, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight-nine-one-four-five, representing the applicant. Actually, we're only requesting one space out front, not the five. That's why I went, just the one. In fact, the one that's marked right here on the overhead.
Yes.
And that's the only one that we're actually requesting, that one space. We have eight, or we've already been approved for eight on the inside, but we just want to have the one on the outside. And once again, it's just more of, if they see it, they know you've got it. If they don't see it, they drive somewhere else.
Thank you very much for that note of information. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Please come forward. State your name.
This is a, in storage business, right?
It's a U-Haul.
Oh, U-Haul. Well, that's different. That's a lot of motion involved. Well, that's all I had to say, is that, because planning and staff is kind of, you know, working together, kind of against each other, but it's always up to the council. But anyway, it sounded like, if it's a business, it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Hearing none. I'll close the public comment. Councilman Barlow, is there a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation, or I should say, move for approval of this item, subject to all conditions.
Thank you.
And Mr. McKnight, you do agree with the conditions that are in place as relates to this item?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. Then that would be my motion at this time. And also, you mentioned one, going back to this slide here, this overhead here, you mentioned one parking stall, but you have two U-Haul trucks there. Go back, go back to the other PowerPoint, if you will.
Yeah, at the time, they were, we were going back and forth, and just, we actually said, we changed it just to the one, because we want to make sure there's still plenty of space, and so we actually had this set up there, is what we were originally going to try to do, and we just want the one space.
Okay, so what happened? So, is it just that space, or is it any space, Flynn, as relates in the front of the building? Because if, in fact, this U-Haul is rented, and there's a car that's parked there, when a U-Haul is returned, I mean, is it just that specific space we're talking about, or just one space anywhere in the front?
The way that the condition reads, in the if-approved condition, states that no more than one rental truck shall be displayed in view of the public right-of-way.
So, it's going to be any?
So, anywhere in that front parking lot, as long as there's no more than one rental truck.
Okay, there we go. Okay, great. Then that would be my motion at this time.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if I closed the public hearing, but I'm doing so now. Thank you, and please vote. And please post.
Good job.
And that motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck. And now, we'll move on to item number sixty-three. SUP four-seven-two-nine-three, public hearing. Applicant Slice, LV LLC. Owner, LVB Ogden Marketing LLC, for possible action or request for a special use permit for a proposed twenty-seven-hundred-and-thirty-square-foot Tavern Limited Establishment at one-fifty North Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite one-hundred, C two, general commercial zone. This is in Councilman Coffin's Ward three. The Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open, and is the applicant or representative present? Please state your name.
Yes. Good afternoon. Todd Kessler, three-hundred North Las Vegas Boulevard, eight-nine-one-oh-one, on behalf of the applicant. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. It's yet another pleasure to come here today and talk about one more business that's going to come to downtown and open up shortly in the Fumani's District. This place, as well as the next item, are both opening up in the bottom of the Ogden, or the formerly Streamline, next to Rachel's Kitchen. If you recall, Rachel's Kitchen is opening this month down there. So, Slice is a pizza operator out of New York, run by a proprietor named Mickey Anger. So Slice is a pizza operator out of New York, run by a proprietor named Mickey Angerle, who is a driving force behind the Summit Series, which is a technology series conference. And she has a very successful restaurant in Lower Manhattan and she is going to bring all of those good, healthy food to downtown. She does organic pizzas, hummus, very organic oriented. She actually writes a kid's health book on eating vegetables. But she's a very good operator and she actually plays ukulele. She's going to be some of the form of live entertainment that will occur down there. With that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions about this item.
We have a duet for her. Yes, please, I could tell you.
Is it a baritone or a tenor ukulele?
You know, I don't know, so I do want to answer that with the right answer, but I do not know.
I'll have to stroll down there and get a piece of pizza and check it out.
Yeah. She should be open in a few months, probably three months or so.
This is public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak, please come forward, state your name.
My name is Anthony Hodges. All I got to say, it's a good thing because it's jobs, jobs, jobs. Hello.
Todd Farlow, I concur with what Anthony says. I love what's going on downtown. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Closed public hearing and Councilman Coffin.
Your Honor, I move for approval of item 63.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Also at the Ogden we just heard. SUP 47295, public hearing. Applicant owner, Northwest Corner Ogden LLC. Owner, LVB Ogden, excuse me, Marketing LLC for possible action under request for a special use permit for a proposed 4,500 square foot tavern limited establishment at 150 North Las Vegas Boulevard, Suite 190, C2, general commercial zone. And this is Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. Public hearing declared open. Applicant again, please go ahead.
Todd Kessler, 300 North Las Vegas Boulevard, 89101, on behalf of the applicant, Northwest Ogden LLC. This is again, is down in the bottom of the Ogden. It is part of the Inspire series and productions that we're putting on. If you recall, we had the corner of Fremont Boulevard in Las Vegas, Fremont Boulevard and Las Vegas Boulevard on last agenda for an Inspire Theater that holds about 200 people. This is a smaller version that holds around 70 people that will be located in the bottom of the Ogden Theater as well. So it's sort of the smaller series that's going to go on with the larger series occurring on Fremont and Las Vegas Boulevard.
Where is that on the map? Is the map in front of you? Where, can we point to where that would be on this map?
That would be in the top right portion that's highlighted.
All right, public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please come forward.
I'm going to be real quick. I want to, I got to ask you, it switched between, you know, one of the wards, where the ward switched over, right? So it used to be in one ward and then another. Now it doesn't matter. It's a good thing it's jobs. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else public comment, which I'll close then. Councilman Ross?
I just had a quick comment and this is real simple, Todd. Go, Todd, go. And that goes for everyone you're associated with downtown.
And I'm here on behalf of a lot of people, as you all know.
And I know that and I think the council recognizes that, certainly Councilman Coffin and Barlow, but you guys are just doing phenomenal downtown. I want to see all the success and as soon as I saw that, I'm thinking, gee, it's about time they start filling in that bottom floor of the Ogden because great opportunities. It's going to be a great, great area.
I should point this out because it won't come before this agenda, but we are putting in, in between Slice and Rachel's Kitchen is a 3,000 square foot or so gallery. It'll be an art gallery of sorts in a meeting space, but local artists will get an opportunity to have a venue.
And also, there's a yoga, is I correct or no?
Not on the ground floor.
Okay, in the building.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Councilman Coffin.
Thanks, Your Honor. Todd, will the, will the art gallery, will that complete the build-out of the ground floor?
Yeah. And then what's actually going to happen is if you know that the corporate offices for STS, which run the Ogden, operate some space and we have the rights to take that space over, which is about another 3,500 square feet, once they move out, which should be in the next couple of years. But that does fill it out for now, so it's full when these businesses open within the next four months or so.
About time. It took a long time, then all of a sudden, bang, bang, bang. Okay.
Yeah, and there's a lot of other great projects that are coming down the pike, so I'm excited.
Thank you very much. Your Honor, I now move for approval of item 64.
Thank you very much. As a motion, please vote and please post. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
We're delighted. Thank you. We'll now move on to items 65 and 66. 65 is SUP 47311, special use permit for proposed church, house of worship. Number 66, SDR 47310, site development plan review for the proposed conversion of an existing 4,800 square foot multi-family residential complex to a house of worship with waivers of the downtown centennial plan setback and architectural design standards. The applicant is Casa de Luz and the owner is the word Alive Church, Inc., at Al, at 2412 Tam Drive. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval on both items and both items are R4, high-density residential zone. These items are in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin, public hearing items which I declare open and is the applicant, several applicants present? Please.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Steve Evans, 1705 Cochrane Street, Las Vegas, 89104. I'm here as a volunteer on behalf of the Casa de Luz Church, seeking approval for the special use permit, SUP 47311 and the accompanying site development review. Simply put, this is a renovation of a church, 3,000, that's actually the report erroneously listed a greater square footage than it actually is. I believe it's 3,624 feet. Just by way of history, Casa de Luz, I first became familiar with them a few years ago. They're located in the naked city and they were renting a fairly dilapidated apartment building where they were conducting their church services and providing ministry to the folks in the naked city area. And all of you know the challenges that the naked city has endured over the last number of years. My first, my first introduction to these folks was that I recognized they were doing great things in the community. Fundamentally, it's a church. They also, part of that church is their ministry, which I believe twice a week they get the donated fresh produce and from Trader Joe's. And I believe a bread company also provides bread. And twice a week, they have a food pantry where they do distribution for the congregants in the immediate naked city area. They also do after-school programs and there's an exciting project that we recently had a fundraiser for called Art Reach. And basically, they take the kids in the neighborhood, the Casa Kids, and they involve them in art programs and dance, et cetera. This little church has caught the attention of a whole lot of people. The building itself was in foreclosure and because they were renting the building and someone stepped forward, an ordinary citizen, brought it from the bank out of foreclosure and signed the deed over to Casa. With me is, I don't have them introduce themselves, but Pastor Dan Winkler, he and his wife live on the property in one of the small apartments. I've seen this group perform miracles. Some of you, some of you up here and some of the staff, over the last couple of years have donated turkeys and toys for our Christmas drive and program. I've seen these kids, which is the foundation, I think, of their ministry. I've seen their lives changed. They provide a lot of hope where none existed. And in all my years of following downtown and following the city, I have yet to see an organization, a church, have the kind of impact that they've had for such a small little ragtag organization. Recently, some of the city's greatest philanthropists stepped forward and did a fundraiser and helped to secure a majority of the money that needed for the renovation. We're not adding any square footage. We're simply planning to renovate this 3,624-foot building and provide the entitlements as they've grown and they need to be officially recognized as the organization that they are. There's been some misinformation and I'll let others speak to that. This is not a homeless shelter. No one lives on the property or sleeps on the property other than the pastor and his wife. And it's not a soup kitchen. Do they reach out to the neighborhood? Absolutely. I can't tell you the opportunities and the miracles that I've witnessed myself. And I imagine there'll be some questions and I'm happy to answer them, but the bottom line is we're simply seeking to renovate it and to have the entitlements. It's also my understanding that in speaking with the city staff, the actual entitlement of the church will not have any greater or lesser effect on future development in the area because of all the other protected uses, et cetera, and the gaming overlay, but I'll let others speak to that. I know that Casa is not opposed to development. I think they'd like to see the area improve and I know they'd like to see opportunities for their congregants to have jobs. So they're certainly not in any way opposed to future development in the area. As I said, it's a miracle that I've witnessed. I'm very proud to be here and speak on their behalf. I would not stand here today after my decades of involvement with downtown and promote and push a project if I didn't feel and know that it's a very good project and it won't have a detrimental effect, if anything, just the opposite. So Pastor Winkler, you can introduce yourself and pick up the pieces I left off.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Pastor Dan Winkler. I live at 2412 Tam Drive in the little apartment that is shown behind the little bars on the window. It's about a 400-square-foot apartment that my wife and I occupy. And we've been there, the building has been there now about almost four years, three and a half years. And the neighborhood has changed significantly. It might be noted, I think, that as we speak here, there's a, there's a meeting going on over at Police Headquarters and it's called Recap, which stands for rebuilding every city around peace. Law enforcement has, has found that teaming with faith-based community is making a significant difference and they asked me to be part of this group because crime stats have had a significant drop in our neighborhood. And so what this was about primarily, this meeting this morning, if I may, is about gang deaths. Lots of young kids are dying because of gang violence. And it seems that the darker their skin color is, the more likely they are to die of a violent gang crime. In fact, in their stats, Clark County has six homicides per 100,000. For Caucasians, Hispanics, that jumps to 10. And the African-Americans, it drops, jumps to 31 per 100,000. And eight is the average. So we see that the, those areas are significant. And already this year, in just the first two weeks of 2013, there have been six gang-related deaths. The youngest is a 14-year-old boy named Haji Muhammad, whose older brother buses across town to come to our church. And so he came for comfort as well. Now, the stats that Captain, our area command captain, for the downtown area command, Captain Sean Anderson, stopped by yesterday with the actual statistics. And so from 2005 through 2012, the narcotics calls have dropped 81%. The disturbance calls have dropped 67%. Robbery, assault and homicide has reduced 50% and property crimes were down 40%. We're also working closely with Deborah Reyes and Tony Morales, who are part of the outreach prevention of the gang crimes. And so the change in our neighborhood is primarily because we know the people. Because I live there, I have a Labrador dog. I walk him and he needs to go out at night. I walk through the neighborhood at night and I've met the gang members, I know the drug dealers. We approach them with compassion and many of those people over the past three and a half years are now our top volunteers and their lives have transformed. Not all of them. There's still work to be done and that's why we asked that we would be able to continue there. As far as the children, I think that's where our heart is, is the greatest. Most of the kids are under-parented and so when they get out of school, rather than going home to no parents, I think you call that latchkey kids, they come, they come to Casa de Luz. They know that they'll be safe. They know that we can help them with their homework. They know that we'll give them a sandwich if they're hungry and give them clothes to wear if they don't have them. And we have a thriving laundry ministry that my daughter, sitting back there, who happens to be Pastor Chris's wife, they have done laundry for the area ladies over 5,000 pounds in one, at one time. We load them up, load the clothes on a trailer and a pickup truck and head to the laundromat. So it's, it's become my home and it's become home for a lot of people who wanted a place to worship and a place that they could be safe. And so I thank you very much, Mayor Goodman and council members, for hearing our requests today.
Thank you for coming. Yes, and please state your name also.
Chris Chapel, 4218 Dover Place. It's an honor to be here. In fact, I was just here with Councilman Ross. We were talking about the human trafficking conference and I said that this was a prophetic moment and it is. I also am a co-chair of the City Interfaith Council and we approached you for the Mayor's Faith Forum and I know we're having another one in March.
Correct.
This is an incredible opportunity to show the partnership between the faith, the city and with local police and to see what has happened in a neighborhood that's transformed. I'm a lifelong resident here. I was born and raised and I'm three generations and my kids make it four and I think that probably takes everybody out of the picture there. This is my city. This is the city that I grew up in. My kids are here and I want to see it transformed. And what is happening in the naked city is very special, but it doesn't have to stop right there. To go in and have an, create an opportunity for people to want to help out. People want to help, but they don't know how to. We're creating that environment for them to help out and to love people who have not received love before. It's hard to hold a child who's been abused or molested and have them actually embrace you. Normally, they're trying to fight their way, but when they see that you're authentic, when they see that you don't have any agenda, but just their well-being, people change. People change. The fact that the naked city, which Tam Drive was crack alley, the narcotics have gone down 81%, it's unbelievable. The taxi traffic has stopped in our neighborhood. Why? Because there are no more drugs to buy there. That's the neighborhood transformation. That's what we plan on doing in the city. We love the city. I love it. This is my home and I know it's the home of everybody here. And so I just asked that you would just, you would join us in this and Mayor will see you in March at the faith forum. In fact- In fact, the First Faith Forum, Steve Shore did a thing on us with the Las Vegas Art Reach, which is a program that we developed specifically for the inner-city youth, and we partner with the art community, where we bring artists, different types of art. We had Cirque du Soleil, so we had the kids juggling stuff, and we have photographers, famous painters have come down, donated their time, and we've actually extended it out to Ward Five with folks at the Dream Center to where we can give these kids an opportunity to see hope, to see that they don't have to look on the corner at the drug dealer as their idol, but now they can look at and understand that UNLV is not that far off for them. And the folks that have come by and supported us have been amazing. In fact, we have one here who will talk on our behalf with regards to the local philanthropy groups. Seen the good work, and so I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And this is a public hearing. Anyone else who wishes to speak on this, please state your name, and then we'll take questions and comments.
Good afternoon. Miles Dixon, 520 East Fremont, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89101. Thank you so much for having me. I apologize that I was slightly delayed. I have the good fortune, along with my business partner Julie Murray, to spend our time and our days working with and for clients and partners who give considerably charitably. They are the foundations that give between $10,000 or tens of $10,000s every year, or in many cases, tens of millions. And so the reason I'm here today is to share with you an observation that we all had as a group of people about a year ago as we came in contact with Casa de Luz. Typically, as I mentioned, our partners give considerable charitable gifts to a large number of very large organizations. But increasingly, we know more and more the value of place-based initiatives, place-based organizations, having people who live and breathe the air in the neighborhoods they're trying to improve. We believe Casa de Luz really personifies that type of organization. And so about a year ago, a number of our partners began coming alongside Casa de Luz and these fine folks behind me and helping them do the work that they are both so good at and believe so strongly in. And so I'm very proud to say that in the last just eight to 10 months, we've raised hundreds of thousands of dollars to provide them the resources, the capacity, and the support to accomplish what it is, again, that they know so well and that they care so deeply for. So I just wanted to take a quick opportunity on behalf of those foundations, those corporations, those individuals who have supplied and supported this organization, to speak to you all and just encourage you for a positive response to this organization and continue to support them in a really meaningful, public way. So thank you so much.
Thank you. A quick question, if I may. Does Casa de Luz rent that property or own it? And if you'd state your name.
Brianna Mackey, 8382 Tbonaway, 89147. Casa de Luz, as Steve Evans explained, we had been renting the property when it went into foreclosure. A private citizen actually retrieved it out of foreclosure and purchased it on our behalf and gave us the deed, so it's now our property, free and clear.
The 4,800-square-foot facility there?
Yes, it's actually about 3,600.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. We will reserve right to keep going here. Anyone else wishing to come forward?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I doubt very much if this structure will be a church forever, or the church will be in this structure forever. But right now, this is a needed program at a very vital place. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Justin Michaels, 9901 Covington Cross Drive. I actually own a business in the area, and my question is, how does this impact future development? So I know there are distance requirements for specific uses. If the applicant is open to it, maybe we can obey this item so we can have a greater understanding as to, you know, what's going to occur at that intersection, because I know there is a lot planned as far as development goes. And how does that impact that?
One point that we forgot to make earlier is we actually do have some...
Would you please state your name? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry again, Brianna Mackey. We do have some letters of support from two area business owners at that intersection, the 7-Eleven and the tire shop. They both consider us to be good neighbors and have seen changes and improvements to the neighborhood since we've been there. So they'd like to see us continue, as would we. As we indicated earlier, we are in full support of development in that neighborhood because we'd like to see jobs come to that neighborhood. We don't have any opposition to any specific use. We have gaming and liquor right across the street from us. Right next to us, we've shared a wall with a facility that was once a medical marijuana use. It's now since become a furniture store. We haven't opposed any of that. We don't have any interest in opposing any of that. Our interest really is in bettering that neighborhood for the people who live there, particularly the children. And we'd like to move forward with the project mostly because we have a lot of community leaders who have come on board and invested money in helping us improve. So Southwest Gas, Diana Bennett, Chris Engelstadt McGary, Tom Thomas of Thomas &amp; Mack, they've all contributed financially to help us get this project going, and we'd like to get started.
Thank you. Please state...
Can I ask my second question, Mayor?
Go right ahead.
Justin Michaels, 9901 Covington Cross Drive, number 170. Understanding the ministry aspect and how that has a potential to affect neighbors, because we've had businesses in that area for some time, and I understand good intentions, but we've had neighbors with good intentions before, and us as the stakeholders and me there on a daily basis, I'm the one that gets to deal with when, you know, you know, say you just, perfect example, if someone gives away free food, I'm the one that gets to pay for cleaning up the mess on our property and those sorts of things. So I understand it's not a soup kitchen, but if you're conducting ministry, you know, when is it occurring? You know, days a week? What all does that entail?
Okay. Please, anyone else?
Bruce Stoker, 5010 South Valley View.
And your affiliation, please, sir? Or just resident?
Representing Oxford Technology. We're a significant property owner in that area. The overhead is indicating...
Could you point to where you are, your facility?
Everything in the orange. And we're talking right over in that corner is the subject property. I agree with Justin. We would like to possibly request an abance so that we can understand this a little bit better. Justin mentioned about the food and wrappers and things like that. One of our properties is the El Mirador Motel here, and all the property behind it and to the side of it is vacant. And I just secured a permit yesterday through our contractor to have a very nice decorative wrought iron sturdy fence with gates put all around these properties and up to behind the Circle K, because we've had a lot of break-ins to our motel through the backside there. And then with the food wrappers and so forth, people are buying food at the Circle K, and they come and like to sit along the pool, not inside the gated pool area, but it's on a raised concrete platform, and it makes for a nice bench. And they leave all the wrappers there, blows in the pool. So part of our tens of $1,000 that we're spending next week for fencing is going to run all along this property line as well to separate our property from the Circle K's, because we do have a serious problem with that. So we would like to, again, request, like Justin said, an abance to further understand really what's going on here besides a place of worship, which we're not against.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public who hasn't spoken who would like to speak? Please come forward, state your name.
Well, one, oh, my name's Anthony Hart. One thing they're using the word "church," and the founding fathers of our country used the word "church," you know, state separate, church, whatever. I know a lot of people, "What does that mean?" Well, church, it means just what it says. In the old days, it looked as being a place of worship, church, you know, whatever. We don't need to go there. But the objective is nowadays, you got places opening up and all over the place, and they call them, they got all kinds of names except the word "church." And some neighborhoods, you better not even put up a cross, because you get a lot of trouble for that. But the main thing is, we really need to remember what the values of our church, I mean, what our country is. The founding fathers of our nation were very religious people. They even thought of nothing, even put God and God we trust on the money. I mean, you know, hey, they was going all out there, you know what I'm saying? So what I'm trying to say now, and we getting away from there, and that's why our nation is beginning to, you know, whatever. So I'm not getting religious on the situation, but all I'm saying, you use the word "church," and I'm very happy with that. And if you're going to stay there, and you're going to try to keep it a church for the better good of the neighborhood, hey, what can go wrong? It's a church, and it represents for the good of the neighborhood. So that's all I'm trying to say. If you're using it right now, if you had to admit it, you're some out-of-the-way situation. You're kind of flexible. But the word "church" is pretty healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, I think what we're going to do, I want to hear from council, and I know there's some questions, comments. I have a few as well, and I see...
Your Honor.
...our attorney looking pregnant with a question or a statement.
Did you have a question for me, Mayor?
Not at this moment.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Your Honor.
Yes. Councilman Coffin first.
We're not through with the discussion. Were you about to make some sort of motion?
No. At this point, what I'd like to do is turn it to council for comments. I know Councilman Mayor Pro Tem had a comment.
Well, I haven't had my chance to ask questions yet, and also I'll have a few. And of course, you know, this neighborhood is one that's close to my heart here because it's one of the edgiest in the whole ward, one of the edgiest in the whole town, you know? It's one which, of course, it's my ward, so I'll be speaking on this issue. The issue revolves around, in my mind, a fear of people who might be worried about future development. And that was my concern when I first heard about it. I thought, oh, brother, another church. Because what that means to people is restrictions, restrictions. They've got to beg support. This church will have first priority on everything, and, you know, nobody's going to want to approve my bar or my strip club or my casino or my this or that, because this church would be there. And I remember a nightmare in the 2009 legislative session when the whole gaming enterprise district was held up because there was a church in the middle of it, and somebody used it as a vehicle to kill a bill, when in reality, the church was very much in favor of the bill. But there it was. It sat there, and it was an undebatable item. It existed, even though the church itself was very much in favor of what was being attempted. And of course, theoretically, that could happen in any situation. But here you have a neighborhood which, so I began to look at in November when I heard about this, and I said, well, what could happen? So I had our staff come together. This is before Steve Evans represented them, or I didn't know you did, Steve, at the time as a volunteer. But I said, what can happen? You know, this is an area ripe for development. It is residential now, but it's shifting, and so I don't want anything to get in the way of potential development, you know? And so I talked to some owners around there. Stratosphere Hotel, very much in favor. The Lucky Dragon people over there, certainly not opposed to this. So the biggest commercial interests at that point were in favor of this. The, but I asked staff to draw up the maps to show how, if, what kind of privileged industries would be affected if, in fact, a church was there, house of worship in the definition. Staff did a map for me, and I don't know whether staff brought those, because I wanted to see, well, how does it affect? So I asked Flynn, you generated this for me. Do you have your copies here?
No, I don't have your copies.
Yeah, I'd like you to put these two maps up in succession, from the larger scale to the smaller scale. We're going to have to address the question about litter, so that this house of worship, should it be approved, not become an attractive nuisance. But let's let the technical expert here...
Mr. Fag, did you move it down a little bit so it's darker?
Certainly.
Okay. Describe what you're showing us first here, Flynn.
Certainly. Flynn Fag, on behalf of the Department of Planning. We had prepared maps as requested by the councilman in trying to understand the issue of how this church might affect other uses. A church is a protected use. From such facilities, such as a liquor establishment tavern, it requires a 1,500-foot separation distance from any church. And then also from any sexually-oriented business, it requires a 1,000-foot distance separation from any church. And so what we did was we mapped those out, shown here. In terms of existing taverns, because of the location shown by the red triangles of existing taverns, no new taverns could locate there because of the required separation distance between other taverns. So it's not the church that's impacting additional taverns coming into the area, it's the existence of existing taverns, which is preventing any more from coming into the area. And that's shown by the orange hatching. With the sexually-oriented businesses shown here in the light blue on the map, the same situation is occurring in that because of the existence of existing sexually-oriented business, that's preventing new ones from coming into the area. So essentially, they're both maxed out. What I might add to that is you passed a text amendment today, I believe, on first reading, or was it second reading today? I can't remember which, for the tavern limited ordinance, which allows the tavern limited use throughout the downtown Centennial Plan area. The tavern limited use is different than a regular tavern in that the tavern limited use doesn't allow gaming, number one, and number two, it doesn't have a separation distance. And so with the passage of that ordinance today, what that allows is additional tavern limited establishments be located there within that neighborhood. So that's something that can occur regardless of the church being approved. One of the other things that I do need to address on the map is the gaming overlay district, which is shown here in the yellow. There is already established a gaming overlay district. As has been mentioned, you cannot have a gaming overlay district within X number of feet of a church. I believe it's 1,500 feet from a church. Because that district has already been established, non-restricted gaming can be located within the boundaries of that district without regard to the location of the church, because it was established prior to the church coming into the picture. And so again, that doesn't impact the existing gaming establishment. We have, as the councilman mentioned, the Lucky Dragon Casino that was just approved there on Sahara. Because they were approved first, prior to the church coming in, they can still go forward. And because they are in the gaming overlay, again, they can move forward with their construction and with the development of that site.
Wake up a little louder, Flynn.
Flynn, the Lucky Dragon, is that on the peace-facing Sahara adjacent to the Allure?
Correct.
That has been in planning?
Yes.
For quite some time?
It's this vacant parcel that I'm pointing to here on the map.
Okay.
And it already has its entitlements in place. We're just waiting for the building permits on the map.
And if you'd just wait one second, Councilman Mayor Pro Tem has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions, Mayor. First of all, Flynn, just explain to me why we have an SUP for this item.
The special use permit is required for a church because the property where it is located is Zoned R4, which is a residential zoning district. And so a special use permit is required for a church in residential districts.
Okay. Thank you. Now, it's my understanding, whoever wants to answer this from CASA, this is a, it's a church for that particular neighborhood. You're not going to be busing people in, you're not going to be bringing people in from other neighborhoods, kind of causing the population to increase. It's strictly for the residents to help them in that particular neighborhood. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. I mean, I don't know how many people you can get in a 3,000-square-foot building, but yes, it's designed to serve the congregants or members of that community. I can't say there might be people that would come from elsewhere, but I think that's fairly unlikely.
If I could just get confirmation from the church, because I think what some people are thinking is that you are opening up this church to bring in hundreds of people in the neighborhood, trash, all that stuff. These people are already living there that you're going to service. Is that correct?
That is correct. Our main, our focus is on the naked city and not city. There are other places that do very good jobs...
Excuse me, Mayor. He'll need to turn his mic on.
...the naked city, and that's where we want to stay. Everybody that comes in for services are from the naked city. We are not opposed...
Make sure it's red.
No, it is. Okay. Everything that we, everything that Casa de Luz stands for is for the naked city. We're not there for, to bus people in. We're not a homeless facility. We're not a soup kitchen. I definitely completely sympathize with the business owners there that are, especially with the litter. We, we do not go up, Fairfield, it's Fairfield to Tam is where we're at, and from Sahara to New York, so it's completely residential. The folks at the Circle K, we deal with that issue as well. We have folks that are walking up the street on Las Vegas Boulevard, and they're trying to hustle for whatever, and they have... to hustle for whatever, and they have complete disregard for the neighborhood, and we've, we try to do the best that we can to stop that and to try to curb that behavior. We don't, all I can say, guys, is I totally understand the garbage.
Address us.
That's one of our pet peeves as well.
What, you know, in trying to vet this and get the right answers, first of all, you do definitely do the work of the Lord, and appreciate it that you're part of the Mayor's Faith in Action Council, and all that we're trying to do together, all the groups. The question is, if I may, Mayor Protem, he still has another question. As the city looks, with the interest of the Stratosphere, the restaurants that are already there, Allure, and Naked City's been there a long, long time, and always had crime problems, as the owners of the private industry seek to improve the area, and your congregants, your group, that live there gets smaller and smaller as property is bought and improvements are made in the physical area, my question is, how, when you look forward, which is why my question, do you rent or own the property? Your work is of such value, one, why wouldn't it be more in the heart, or in an area that is not under the microscope for redevelopment, and to improve it so the crime is gone?
I can answer that question. First off, everything is Naked City-driven, and those that are littering are not part of our congregation, they're outside of that box. Second thing is, why are we in the naked city? Simple, God put us there, we didn't want to go there, because Naked City, I grew up here, I knew, you don't go to Naked City. And so when we did our first outreach at the Stupac Community Center, which is a city property, we had 500 people in attendance. It was so successful that people, that we were asked back by the city for the following month, and then the following month after that, by the Stratosphere and the City of Las Vegas, because they had heard the work that we were doing, and they wanted to pour into that community. We are big into community partners. We need employers in that neighborhood, because how do you pull a drug dealer off the street? They changed their lives, but now they don't have any income coming in. Well, what we've done is we've partnered with groups, with different employers, especially off the western corridor there, off Western Island, the warehouses there, and we said, hey, this is what we're trying to do. They came, kicked the tires at Casa, they saw what was going on, they said, anybody that you recommend, we will hire on the spot, regardless on felonies, regardless on drug charges. So now we've been able to take people off the streets, who are causing a lot of damage, get them into gainful employment, and now one of them is now a manager in the company. I remember he bought his first car six months ago. He had, he had to, I needed to help him out with filling out the benefit package, because it was the first time he ever done that, and it was the first Christmas he bought presents for his family. Those are the little things that change.
Well, it speaks to the good work and everything that you're doing with the current condition, but my question was more directed towards, as the properties are picked up and developed, and the Naked City shrinks in its current residency, are you not better located? Well, I do want, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Evans, because I did interject, Mayor Protem had some more questions.
No, Your Honor. Your Honor, I had, I was still working the issue when you interrupted. I had Flynn up there, remember, showing us maps? And he had, he was explaining the map?
Yes.
And now we're moving to the second map, Your Honor.
Okay.
So we're not done with our work down here.
Okay.
We're almost done, because I was addressing, for the council's benefit, the work that's gone on.
At the point that we were to pause is when I knew there were questions here, so if you want to continue on.
Yeah, I'd like to continue if I could. Please go back up there, Flynn, and go to the second map. Really, you know, we've got to follow through on these things so that we finish. Okay, are we okay now?
Well, no, Councilman Beers has something.
Soon as he, I'll give him the floor as soon as we finish this. You can take all afternoon if you want on it, Your Honor, I just want to make sure that, that there's a follow-through on where we were going, so.
Excuse me?
There, okay, now on the map. Now let's get back on it, yeah. You want to put that, that map up, or the first map, or the second map?
Yeah, I've got the second map.
Bob, was there a question on the first map?
There we go, thank you. What is the gray line in a circular form?
You're speaking of these two?
No, no, that's the black one, to the west, yes, that one. What is that line?
That light blue line is the separation distance from sexually oriented businesses. So it's a thousand-foot distance from existing sexually oriented businesses.
And then what is the orange line further to the northwest?
The orange line that you see here is the 1,500-foot separation distance from existing taverns.
Okay.
That are located in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, the thing is, and the next map, we already actually have done enough probably on that, haven't we? But you essentially see that my concerns initially that I had on this were those which would address the concerns of investor owners. Investor owners are who we are relying upon in sketchy neighborhoods like this to make things happen, because residents there, they just can't assume, they can't accumulate the capital to do the kinds of things. Not one, not one protest has come in from a resident. They've come in from landowners, representatives of landowners, who have plans, and so naturally, you know, you try to address that issue. That's their money at stake. And what I discovered is that really, they have nothing to fear from this, because it's, you know, it's already permitted, and those that aren't permitted, well, they'd have, in other words, everything that has a marginal issue in this town would have to go through the process anyway. And not because of a church, but because of an existing gaming, or liquor, or sexually-oriented establishment already there. And so that's why it ended up having support of people that contacted me. Now, I didn't get any letters from anybody until last, yesterday, I guess it was, of people that were opposed, so, you know, I don't know where they were, if they were at the Planning Commission or not, because it did pass Planning Commission pretty heavily. So, these are the things that, you know, we as members of the council have to look out for. Now, I've been approached by people who work in this building, who aren't so happy about this, but they have an interest that should be left off this dais. And I think best, you know, that we move forward on this at this point. I don't know who would have a fear, imagined or real, that would be realized. I don't think there's a fear to be realized here. Certainly you hear about them, and people get themselves whipped up, and they call us, and they want us to delay and delay, because they didn't do their homework early, or because they didn't contact us early, and now they're scared, but they don't have to be scared. And so I don't quite know, unless they want to buy that property out from under this church, I have no idea why they'd be here if they had done their research. Your Honor, it's your meeting, but I just wanted to say that this is all I had to say on the issue, until we move, you know, one way or the other.
Madam Mayor?
If I may, the questions were ongoing already with Mayor Protem, and I interrupted him to ask a question, so if you would let him continue, I promise you, I will get back to you.
I think maybe, from my clarification, maybe answer your question. I think the question posed from the Mayor Protem was, or through you, Madam Mayor, was, as this neighborhood develops, and as it achieves greater economic status and new, new building businesses, what happens to the church when they have a diminished congregation? And in my discussions with Casa de Luz, I think they would want nothing more than to find another neighborhood, because that's a foundation of their mission, put them out of work.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that, Steve, that's exactly what we were asking. As been mentioned a couple of times, I mean, this is a rough area. I mean, I worked this area as a police officer 25 years ago, and a sergeant, and a lieutenant, and we had a substation in there, and it hasn't changed much from 30 years ago. It's still, it's still a tough area. I know the crime stats are, are down, but it's still a tough area. I don't know when this area's gonna be developed, I mean, it could be 20 years, I don't know. And, kind of answered the question, if development does come in, and the clientele goes away, there would be no reason for you to be there, because there's nobody else to service, so what I've heard today, I haven't heard any reason why you should not be there. I mean, you're, you're gonna be providing a service in a tough area to people that need it, so I haven't heard anything to cause me to, to not, to vote against you going in there. I will make a comment, though, if, so, so that's my comment, as far as that's concerned. If Councilman Coffin wants to obey this for 30 days, just to get a little bit more discussion and input, I'm fine with that, too, but I don't want to delay this forever, and I think you, what I've heard today, unless something else comes up later on, what I've heard today, I would love to have you guys in there, helping people that need it, so, thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, through you, Madam Mayor, I think Justin's concerns, and I think Rick's, I know that the Casa people would be more than happy to meet with he, or they, or any other concerned citizen. The gentleman who spoke of the motel, I think it's about a half a mile away, but I do think that everybody is on the same page in terms of wanting a greater degree of harmony in that area, and I'm not sure obeying it is going to achieve any further resolution than just the fact that I know everybody's got an open door, and an open heart, and an open mind, and more than happy to, to talk with them.
I just wanted to quickly ask, for the businesses that talked about the trash and everything, that trash isn't because of the church, because the church itself is not yet there. These people acting are there, but you're asking for permission for a church, so it's not there yet, right?
They have been providing worship services in there for almost three years.
Okay, for a year?
Three years.
Three years.
Okay, but then why are we having, asking for a permit? Are we late in asking for a permit? Are we getting a proposed church, house of worship now?
Well, they moved into a dilapidated apartment building without knowledge that they needed to have a church that were not cited.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. And, because that area used to be in Ward 1, and it, it has been trashy, and there has been a lot of junk that's been around there, but it's been there for a long, long time, and I was just wondering if the individuals who spoke to us, or businesses, were saying they had seen an increase, or is it this, is it something that, this is a regular problem we need to get? Am I making sense in that question? Are the businesses still here? I'm just trying to look at both sides of this.
Justin Michaels, 9901 Covington Cross Drive, number 170. My point before is, we've had people do ministry work in the area, and it actually becomes, and it's full intention, I understand, it's a good point, it's that I've, I as a business owner, have had to deal with the repercussions of...
Of these other types of church relationships?
Right.
Which we've had in other wards, by the way, too, so I know what you're saying.
So my question was just simply, I want to understand greater what the ministry work is. Is this a daily deal, every morning they give away food from, you know, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM to needy families? Or is this something that any individual in the area can come and, you know, get it to go back?
And you haven't had those questions answered yet, have you?
Well, no, ma'am, that's why I came today, because...
So, the question to you then, representing the church, is, what are the times you would be meeting? Are you distributing food, which we had, I think, a trouble with in Coffin's word at one time, and that would be attracting large numbers of people?
We do operate a food pantry. It's limited to the residents in the neighborhood, we don't, we, we don't cater to the homeless, because really the issue is with, is with the homeless population. We distribute food two days a week, from 10:00 AM till about 1:00 PM, and it's directed specifically to the families and the residents. We work with Three Square, so we have their, their check-in system, so everybody has a card, and you cannot give food apart from that. Everything is, is completely detailed, and we limit the amount of food that they're given over a monthly basis.
So the check-in system is related to making sure that you have the neighborhood and that...
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Michaels, Justin, Your Honor, oh, who's got the gavel? Anyway, Justin, what is your business that you own over there?
Strip Gun Club.
Strip Gun Club, that is, on the other side of the Boulevard, I've been over there and shot.
Yes, sir, you have.
Okay, okay, that's on the other side of the Boulevard.
Yes, sir.
All right. Do you also own land inside the area, on the other side of the street there?
No, sir, I don't, I don't individually own land on that side of the Boulevard, no, sir. But I do represent clients who own property over there.
I've been over there, I know who your partners are, too, then, but Justin, let's face it, guys that own a gun club in the urban area are gonna oppose a church who's trying to help people? It sounds a little incongruous, I have to say.
No, sir, I'm not up here opposing. What I came forward and asked is, I had two questions as to, A, when they were gonna provide ministry services, which I think is a fair question. And then my second question was, understanding how it could impact future development, but I believe Mr. Fag appropriately explained that, that because there is an existing gaming overlay, and because there are existing taverns, sexually oriented businesses, and the other things he pointed out, that this wouldn't impact those at that point. So, no, I don't think I'm being dis genuine by being up here.
No, you're not being dis genuine, you were saying it's kind of funny, because this is Las Vegas, and, and you have every right to appear at anything, even if it's across town. But I don't know if you were turned away by the Planning Commission in your argument?
No, sir, actually, I was unable to attend the Planning Commission event because of a family obligation.
Okay, I'm gonna come over and shoot some more with you. And, but in the meantime, this time I'll pay.
Thank you.
Your Honor, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, not to obey.
We have some more questions and comments from council, may they speak, please?
I think what you guys are doing is great, without a doubt, and Mr. Fag, if you've cleared up, in my mind, and in these, Mr. Michaels' mind, Mr. Michaels, if you'd come back up to the microphone with your permission, Mayor, and the other gentleman, you also, who represent the significant properties in that area, if you don't mind, and Mayor, if I may, direct my questions to them, are you satisfied with what you've heard from this group?
Yes, sir, at this point. I just wanted greater understanding, because I've seen the impact at other locations, you know, around the city with other businesses that I've been involved in the past, and I just wanted to understand what it is. Now that they explain that they're affiliated with Three Square, there's a check-in process that assures, excuse me, eases my concerns.
Okay.
Because obviously, if it was something that can negatively impact or cost a business owner, you know, more money, then we want to understand, understand that. But at this point, they've answered all of the questions, my other question was related to the zoning, which the Planning Department answered, so I'm satisfied at this point, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels, and will you please, sir, and state your name again, please?
Bruce Stoker, 5010 South Valley View, representing Oxford Technologies. I'm for the most part satisfied. One of our biggest concerns, I know that, I don't want it to be misconstrued, that our motel is a half a mile away, it's, we own property all the way back to just within a few parcels of this church. So, for our redevelopment in the future, for not only the property that the Charlie Frey's Trust currently owns, but the stuff that we're continuing to add to it, under the name of Oxford, isn't necessarily restricted in the future by this. I understand what the Planning Department and Commission is saying now, other restrictions really take precedent over this establishment, but the, we all know the neighborhood, and we spend a lot of money down there, buying properties that have boarded up and dilapidated buildings, as soon as we close on them, we get asbestos abated, we scrape them, and we fence them, and our fencing keeps getting stolen, we have to keep getting homeless establishments taken off of there, as you know. And, so we have our own private patrols go down there now to take care of the area, we're spending tens of thousands of dollars next month for some other, some new fencing on some of the properties, to help protect our business interests, and our biggest concern was, if this was gonna be a soup kitchen, or a daily, people coming into the neighborhood and picking up food that's wrapped, and they're walking around on the vacant parcels and just dropping their litter, it just continues to compound our problems. So with the check-in process, I'm more comfortable with that now.
With, with that, Mayor, if I can, continue. So you're comfortable with everything? So you're comfortable with everything they've explained to you now regarding what they're planning on and the properties that you represent in that area?
Well, with the...
Including what Mr. Fag's statements were, because I think that's significant.
Yeah.
Because my concerns would be this, too. I think the church is doing a phenomenal job. I think they're serving the community well. And it's hard to say no, but I'm concerned about the economic impacts as well, because we, as a city council, would one day want to see that area, you know, brought back to life, re-energized with new businesses and new economy. And... And but from... I understand what Mr. Fag, if you can confirm for me, I mean, this is not going to... This special use permit and the site plan is not going to create those kind of limitations on any other kind of... And I'll say this, Crazy Horse. I envision Crazy Horse coming back one day. I mean, are we going to be having a huge discussion about there's a church across the street from Crazy Horse, and we can't allow the adult use again? I mean, that's my concern. What restrictions are we putting on ourselves ahead of time? I want them to continue what they're doing. They're doing great work in changing people's lives. That's perfect. That's what we're supposed to do. That's what we're all called to do. But can you make comment to that with the Mayor's permission?
There it goes. In regards to the separation distance requirements and protected uses, and specifically the example that you cited, that being of the Crazy Horse, the Crazy Horse, there was an ordinance passed that allows the Crazy Horse to be reestablished through a certain date. And so that's a kind of a unique example. But looking at the other existing taverns that are already established there in the neighborhood, because of the church coming in, yes, that does create a new problem for them in that it establishes a protected use within their separation distance. However, they can continue to operate. They can sell the business to someone else. The only issue is that if they discontinue their operations for longer than a year, then they either have to do the extension of time process, which we've established, or else they have to establish a conforming use. So for sexually oriented businesses or taverns that are already there, if they discontinue their operations, yes, there may be a problem. But if they continue to operate, if they sell the business to someone else, they're fine. With the gaming overlay district, again, because it has been established through the requirements of Nevada revised statutes, non-restricted gaming may be located within the boundaries of that district. The church does not impact it. If they were wanting to expand the gaming overlay district, then the church may impact that. But with the existing boundaries, no, as long as they're located within the boundaries of the overlay.
Okay. So, Mayor, if I can continue just briefly. So you guys are doing great work as the church. You now know you've been operating without a special use permit that you were needed to have, plus the site SDR. The other property owners and businesses in the vicinity are satisfied with the comments made today. And I would suggest this, that not only do you outreach to the tire shop and 7-Eleven, but hook up with those guys, too, because they've obviously got a vested interest, whether it's their own dirt or someone else's that they represent, because they're part of this community, too. And they're also part of that business model that we want to see in economic development. So... And you guys are a part of that model, too, especially with the great services that you're providing downtown. So, thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you all.
Thank you. And I would say, too, that at the 7-Eleven or Circle K, whatever it is, people that go in there, I see it all the time, they are the ones that come up with the car, tear up whatever they're reading, and throw it on the ground, which then blows over to your property. So maybe a trip over to the ownership there and the management to help them. Not that people are going to do it, that's people. So, any other comments from council here? I just want to reiterate, I think what's come out absolutely, is we look forward to the day that you have serviced the entire community and that redevelopment is booming because of your great service, and you continue to do a wonderful job, and that you have great partners with you and understanding, as Councilman Ross has brought out from the comments that you've heard from those who had questions, everything's answered. So at this point, I would ask Councilman Coffin to make a motion.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to move to approve, and the reasons are pretty obvious. For 60, the 60-plus years I've lived here, I've known that area since I was a little kid. It was sketchy then, called Horse Alley. It's been called the Naked City. It's been called whatever you name it. And it's always been something like that. It's just a friction point between the city and the county. It's the area that's always going to be where there's a mixing going on. And these people are doing a heck of a job for the people that live there. They call them residents, but that resident might live under the underpass at Sahara and the freeway. That resident might live behind an apartment, but he's got a right to live and a right to worship. And the services that are provided to these people help keep them out of other neighborhoods where they might be bothering people. And so I think there's a self-governing mechanism going on here. I'm quite sure and comfortable now with... To move for approval. I worry that there are people who have substantial property holdings in this neighborhood who waited till the last minute to register, frankly, protests of a nature I couldn't quite understand until they finally came up and spoke and wanted to delay. And really, delay, we're okay with legitimate concerns, but when you have had an opportunity to educate yourself about an issue, and you own a lot of land down there, don't wait until the day of a council meeting to come and represent yourself, because this was well in hand. The process was moving forward with all the self-governing that we exercised, because we didn't want to mess up what we've got going down here. We want development to occur. We don't want any soul to be turned down to their business, not at all. And unless, of course, you know, it's not a well-run business. But that's, you know, I'm beeping my gums here, but I'm a little frustrated when those things happen, as we all have been frustrated at time or two. These people will do a good job for us, all of us, all the citizens, not just those people there. It's a charming little place to go. Everybody should visit it. And maybe we'd get a little good out of it. I move for approval.
Before the motion is cast, I do want you to know in public comment that my involvement and my approval to this, and knowing the good work you're doing, I am totally in favor of granting these to you, but need to disclose to you that public comment from Justin Michaels and the business he owns, that business I have working for me, a lady by the name of Trish Truesdale, and I want that made public record. I also have had the good time of shooting at the Strip Gun Club, but in fact, I know that you've answered their questions well. And I think everything, everybody appreciates everything you're doing. And it's my wish, that having seen the Naked City since the late 1960s, that your work does help make it a place where everybody wants to visit, where the stratosphere feels they can put more money into the program, and that you get more people involved and back to work. And I think you do a great job. And hopefully, I just wish you were off Sahara and more in the heart, where people didn't have to walk so far, and people didn't have to come down that busy street where they could access your facilities and the work that you do. It's wonderful. So with that, there's a motion.
Mayor, if I could jump in before the vote? I just need to make the disclosure a little more complete, so that it's understood. And Trish, you can nod up or down, so if I get any of the facts wrong. You are married to Rick Truesdale, and Justin is your son-in-law, and they both have a financial interest in the gun shop. And that is the potential conflict. And because of the distant separation, the fact that they're not opposed to it, and the fact that even if they were, you could be objective in spite of the fact that Trish is your employee, is why you... Disclosure is appropriate, but you do not have to abstain.
And were... Had there been no public comment? Because I have a relationship with somebody that owns a business somewhere in the neighborhood every time, do I have to make a disclosure that...
Right. Generally speaking, no. It's when somebody that could potentially, you know, influence you because they work with you or live with you or whatever, and they have an opinion, then I think we're going to have a disclosure issue. And in this case, I think disclosure is appropriate. I don't think it's the kind of conflict that rises to the level where you have to abstain.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyway, there's a motion. Please vote. And please post. And we look forward to everything you're doing. Thank you.
Mayor, we have item 66 as well.
Oh, sorry, that was only half. And moving on to item number 66, Councilman Coffin.
Thanks, Your Honor. I move for approval of item 66, the Site Development Plan Review.
And there's a motion on item 66. Please vote. And please post. And that motion carries. Thank you.
Councilman Coffin, and Madam Mayor, and the rest of my friends on this council, on behalf of Casa de Luz, I thank you very, very much. This is good governance.
Thank you. We know what good work they do. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number 68. Is that right?
Yes.
SDR 47203, Public Hearing, Applicant Cash Mac LLC Owner, Las Vegas, Midi Grand Prix for Possible Action on a Request for Site Development Plan Review for a proposed 50-foot-tall, 497-square-foot illuminated freestanding on-premise sign on 6.46 acres at 1401 North Rainbow Boulevard, C1 Commercial Limited Zone. This is in Councilman Barlow's Ward Five. Planning Commission and staff recommend approval. This is a public hearing. I declare open. Is the applicant present?
Yes. My name is Jerry Barton, 7816 Purple Mountain Avenue. I'm Vice President and Managing Partner of Las Vegas Mini Grand Prix. I would like to say, do you want your map back here?
Thank you.
Wonderful place.
We're just asking for 10 feet over the norm for this sign. We've been there 20 years and have never had an on-premise sign. The technology now is very good. Prices have come down to where we feel that's a good investment for us. The freeway's been expanded, so we pretty much lost a lot of our view off the freeway. And our property actually sits about 10 or 11 feet below the freeway level. So actually, this sign will be about 40 feet above the freeway to the top of the sign. The bottom of the sign will be about 15 feet above the top of the freeway. So we just ask for your approval for that, and if you have any questions. I think you guys have a copy of that.
Thank you. It is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to be heard at this time, please come forward. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, anyone comments? Councilman Barlow?
Well, I wonder if I have to disclose that I spent a lot of money at this location there.
Unfortunately, so have I.
I want to know how much is a lot. Well...
Good.
I'm at this location quite a bit, at least every other weekend, practically.
We love having you.
If it's not me bringing my kids, it's my baby brother and I racing around the big track. And I understand that you build the cars. You shared that with me, right? You build the big...
We build the big cars, yes, because there's nowhere in the world that you can actually buy those. So those big cars that you ride are the only 10 in the world like that.
And where do you build them? You build them here locally?
No, I didn't. I actually have a friend that has a race car manufacturing facility. I did all the design work and had him build them at his factory.
Where's his factory located?
Montana.
Montana? Do you think he would be willing to speak to our Economic and Urban Development Department to move his manufacturing facility here to the city of Las Vegas?
I'm not sure.
Would you ask him?
I will surely ask him. I keep telling him to come down here, but he's pretty attached to Montana.
Well, he can live in Montana. We just want his factory here in the state of Nevada. Yeah. Well, this is a great location, and I understand also you have the best ribs in town.
That's correct.
What makes you say that?
I've tasted a lot of ribs. I've been here since 1951, and I've tasted ribs all over the place, so... And even, you know, this is my 12th park like this, and I've built parks all over back east, so I've tasted a few ribs in my life. And I would just tell you that we have some very, very good ribs.
Right. Well, before I move for recommendation, I would like for other council members to chime in, should they choose. But prior to doing so, talk to us about this LED sign here that will be over the US 95 south or north.
Okay. This sign, it's actually not designed to be read over the top of the overpasses. Most of those signs are 55 feet to the bottom, so our sign's only 50 feet to the top. This sign will actually... It has a reader board on top where we could run pretty much text or some sort of action on there. And then below that is our standard logo.
Okay.
It's a well-made sign. It's actually... I've been researching these signs for 10 years now. We finally got to a point where, like I said, the technology is good enough to read in the daylight, which has always been a problem. And the cost is, you know, even though they're still high, the cost is in a area where we feel like we can afford it. Our business, like I say, has never had a sign on the freeway. It's the only park that I've ever had that never actually had a sign on the frontage. We did develop that property about 20 years ago. It was an old gravel mine, so we cleaned that property up. It was full of trash and rocks and khalichi, and built this park. And in those days, of course, there wasn't even a freeway there when we first started. It was just an expressway. It was very narrow, and we had a great view off of there and so forth. I do love the way they fixed up the freeway, though. It's helped us a lot in that it has a nice guardrail now, because before that, it was... There was some safety issues. All they had was a chain link fence on the side of the freeway, and cars used to come off there every once in a while. But I worked with the designers of that improvement to make it so that it worked for both of us, and they did a great job.
Good deal. Good deal. Are there any members of the council that would like to say anything?
No, I've already asked. Everybody's calm, so ready for your motion.
Okay. I would like to move for approval of this item, subject to all conditions, and also disclose that I spend quite a bit of money at this location, enjoying myself with my family and friends. And I look forward to coming by and saying hello once I come back through during the week. Good deal. That's my motion at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. And please post. And it is fun out there. And you do great parties, too, for little people.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
There is on one of the conditions, it says something about two years. Does that mean I have two years to build the sign?
That's correct.
Okay. That's not a problem. All right.
That's okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Great. Before you leave, what is the scale of the Grand Prix?
The track or the cars?
The car. The car.
It's about, I'd say, 5/8ths. Those cars are 10 feet long.
10 feet long?
Yeah. 800 pounds.
They're pretty big cars.
Yeah.
Good deal.
Thank you. You've covered that. Thank you unanimously. Number 69, SDR 47324, Public Hearing. Applicant Owner, Culinary Workers Union Local 226 for Possible Action on a Request for Site Development Plan Review for an existing 2160-square-foot modular office building in waivers of the downtown. Centennial Plan Setback and Architectural Design Standards on 2.66 acres at 1630 South Commerce, C2 General Commercial Zone. And this is in Ward Three, Councilman Coffin. Staff recommends denial. Planning Commission recommends approval. And, Mr. Fag, the denial based on, please?
Based on the fact that this is a modular structure that was originally approved back in 2005, was supposed to be removed in 2010. So we would prefer to see a permanent structure on the site.
Oh. Oh, okay. Please state your name. Good afternoon.
Madam Mayor, Michael McDonald, Representative Culinary, Alpha Omega Strategies, 840, South Rancho, 4334. We'd like to thank, first off, Councilman Kaufman and his planning commissioner. We reviewed this. Originally, this was put together, as Mr. Fag mentioned, in 2005. We represented then. As you recall, we were at the boom, at the height of our building population. The culinary, at that time, had plans to erect a permanent structure, but as the economy went down, we saw that it hit everybody, not only the strip properties, definitely the downtown properties, but also the working men and women of the culinary. So the financial situation has changed. This is a structure that has been maintained. You notice on this, our landscaping, we changed the landscaping of it, modernized the landscaping. It is, we are one of the best neighbors in the neighborhood. We try to, we actually work with residents in the neighborhood. As you're aware, it's a draw because it employs thousands, thousands upon thousands of members. Originally, you look at this, this is how it originally looked with the red stripe and the color of the building. When, not planning, but our code enforcement came out, there was some concerns about the air conditioners you'll see on your board right now. They wanted them shielded. And also the color of the building and the structure of the stairs made permanent. On that, the only, we worked with planning staff. The only thing we could not take care of was the structure of fencing these in. We talked to our maintenance men and also the people who put the air conditioners on this, and shielding them would prevent them from working. So we tried to do everything we could. We looked at areas in the school district that have the same type of modulators. They have some of the same existing air conditioning ducts to stick out. They do a wonderful job for our future, and they do here as well. So it's been repainted. Point that to you. Am I close? That's it this afternoon. You notice that we painted the building to match our overall building. The paint scheme is matched. The landscaping has been upgraded. As I mentioned before, the weeds that were there, the bushes were cut back. Everything was put together. The stairs have been brought up to color what they seen, so the eyesore they had. At the planning commission, there was some type of confusion. I was addressing Commissioner Quinn, when she asked how long would be here. Using the database we got from the LVCVA and also from The Economist in the Valley, and also from Nevada, they said the boom is going to take anywhere from eight to 10 years for Nevada to heal, more Las Vegas. So based upon those numbers is how we arrived at the number that we, what would our permanent structure be. And Councilman Kaufman, your commissioner did a wonderful job on relating how he'd like to see a permanent building there as well. I think everybody in the area would, along with Councilman Anthony. I worked this area. I represent, I worked plain clothes. I worked it undercover. I represented as a councilman. It's a very, very hard area, and having good neighbors that are up and running, which the culinary does, is important because we're on-site, we're actively involved in the neighborhood, and we've worked through Councilman Kaufman's office to maintain the presence of that neighborhood as well. So that's where we arrived today, sir, Madam Mayor, and through you to Councilman Kaufman.
And is this for an extension of two years or an indefinite period of time?
Originally, it came back, Your Honor. When this was put up, there's nobody I know that likes modulators anywhere that we put up. We would love to see permanent buildings. I know it's a concern. It was a concern of mine when I served. It's a concern of, I know Councilman Kaufman, not speaking for you, sir, but you've done a wonderful job redeveloping the area. And, Madam Mayor, and it's also a concern, Mr. Fag, not to speak for him, but we'd like to see permanent buildings. So they, originally, it was brought in as a permanent structure, and then Councilman Kaufman's planning commissioner did a wonderful job, gave an extension of three years. So we'll be back for review in three years.
Asking for another three-year extension. Is that correct, Mr. Fag?
Madam Mayor, just to confirm, yes. Condition number one for the site plan states that this approval is valid for a period of three years unless an extension of time is approved to allow it to remain longer. So it is for an additional three years through
This is a public hearing. Would you care to come forward, state your name, make your comments, please?
Yes, thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Both of the operating engineers have new buildings. The electricians have beautiful buildings. The laborers' union has beautiful buildings. The carpenters' union has beautiful buildings, and the teamsters have beautiful buildings. And what we get are temporary buildings. And so I do not want this to become permanent in any... They want three years. Three years is fine, but nothing permanent here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make public comment? And do state your name.
Name's hard. It is a culinary, and it does represent, you know, a great deal of employed people, you know what I'm saying? So this is not just a structure per se. It represents a lot of people and a lot of jobs, and it has a tremendous tie-in. So it's going to give it a little more time to exist until times get better, and they can put a permanent structure down the road. Hey, they're in the same board as everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll close the public hearing.
Counsel, anyone? Okay.
Thank you, Your Honor. The provision would be for a three-year limitation on this request. The, as I did visit, and apparently so did my planning commissioner, and the property is very well-maintained. They may be temporary structures, but they look very well. They look nicely painted, and they have concealed utilities and the kinds of, you know, the kinds of mechanical that might look offensive to someone, maybe in an ordinary neighborhood. But again, we're in the naked city here, and so it looks pretty darn good for that area. Three years is long enough, and I think that by then, hopefully, the union will be ready to put up something different, because even they are getting pretty tired of living in temporary structures, as anybody would.
Yes, sir.
So thank you very much for presenting this to us, Mike. I move for approval with a three-year time limit on this review.
There's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries, and you do know that the fire life of one of those buildings, three minutes. So hopefully, you have no kitchens in there or anything, because I know we dealt with them out at the school, and that was the biggest concern, three-minute fire life.
Madam Mayor, yes, it's a major concern. We have no kitchens in there. We use it to, for the overflow of our employees. We're trying to keep everybody afloat. As the economy went down, the union made sure that everybody still had a place to pick up their food and keep everybody at least above water while the economy recovers.
Well, here's hoping for the future, since the other unions have gone to bricks and mortar. And I know Detailer is moving on, so there will be a new director, president, and hopefully, he'll find the pot of gold to make that a permanent structure.
Yes, ma'am. She's the first union leader. She worked her way up. She's the first Latino secretary, Secretary and Treasurer. She was from, she's from Nicaragua, arrived in Miami and came to Nevada, worked her way up through housekeeping. She's hands-on. She's very personable, a lot like all of you. She always has an open policy. She works very hard for the men and women.
Would you please extend to her, on behalf of the counsel and mayor, congratulations, and I would love her to come visit City Hall when she sees time fit.
We will do that, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations to her.
And I'd like to thank Councilman Kaufman, Your Honor, for coming out.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 70. I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements. So done. Thank you. And we'll move on to item 71. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, please, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Your microphone?
I thought it was on. Thank you for letting me stop by. What it is, is that we all need to keep positive in our thinking. Things are picking up, moving on, and our city means so much. And so all I'm trying to say, although it's considered 13, remember, I told you it's not a bad-looking thing, not to me, anyway. But anyway, all I want to say is that it's looking good, and a lot of businesses are moving in, and things are picking up, and the state is making it a lot easier for businesses to come in with the government and so on. So what I'm saying is, going forward, I think the state and Nevada as a whole moving forward. And good luck to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Sharon Lee, 4894 Long Mountain Road, LED solar green energy company. And here with me is Paul Li, address 5341 Black Eye Susan Court from China. This is Paul Li. He wants to build a temple in Las Vegas. Of course, I'm sorry, I'm from Los Angeles. About three years ago, he came from Los Angeles. But anyway, he wished to build a temple at Las Vegas, and then doing some of the cultural exchange, which is all the culture from China, anything like that. And then currently, he owns the Buddhist temple, was the biggest in China. So he wished to find a location somewhere in here so we could do less hearing. So whatever the religious area, could build a religious area. So I guess yesterday, I had a talk to the redevelopment agency in the city hall, and they're thinking about they could, I mean, is anything, you know, mayor, councilwoman could help us to find a place for him?
When you spoke this morning, I suggested you speak with the Economic Urban Development, which is Bill Arndt or Scott Adams over here. He certainly, if you would give him your cards, he will certainly follow through. And welcome to you both.
Thank you. And also, he wants to say something, maybe...
And if he would repeat his name for our...
His name is Paul Li, and address 5341 Black Eye Susan Court, Las Vegas, Nevada 89031. He said, he owns the temple in China, Shenyang, and this is his first time came over here, and first time came to Las Vegas. So he chose the location, Las Vegas, as his temple in USA.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
He would help Las Vegas to create a lot of job opportunity, because his church,
I mean, temple member, each day go to follow, it's about 10,000 people each day. Okay, so he has a lot of rich people, investor, he's a good friend, he's been at church, I mean, temple for 30 years. So those people would love to be invested in, I mean, in Las Vegas. So he could help to help create a job and then develop all the good economic in Las Vegas. And then he said, thank you.
After we thank you, and wonderful words, and we would welcome you and your business, as I mentioned earlier, the Las Vegas Asian Chamber of Commerce is a wonderful place as well to connect with at this point. And Councilwoman Tarkanian?
Well, and it's a Buddhist church you're talking about building?
Yes.
A temple. Have you had contact with the Buddhist center on Charleston?
No, I have not.
They have a very, very active group.
Oh.
And we could, well, it's on Charleston, near Kalan. It's on West Charleston. It's on West Charleston. If you leave your address and name, perhaps with Scott, I'll make sure that that information is passed along to you, the individuals that are involved, and how you can contact them. But they are very active, and they have built their own center over there, so...
Really? How big is it? How big is the temple?
How big?
How big is the temple?
I can't remember how many feet. Can you? I, it's a center where they meet, and they also have some of the worship there, too. But I couldn't remember how many feet. All I know is it takes up a good part of a corner, and that they are wanting to expand, and I think that you two might do some very good things together.
Oh, thank you very much for the information.
Leave the information with Scott, who just raised his hand over there, and I will get to the people in the Buddhist center and have them contact you. I'll ask them to contact you.
Yeah, he's leaving tonight, but I will be here. Yeah.
You will be here?
Yeah, he will be leaving tonight, yeah, to go back to his temple there. But he also bought a house here, too, and he will continue, he's thinking about Las Vegas. It's a good, because right now, not only Chinese population is getting more and more, but his church, I mean, his temple could go to, could have like a wellness center, and then it helps a lot of people, not even the worship. You could do a lot of things in that temple. But anyway.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
He said, thank you very much.
Thank you. Safe flight.
That's for him.
Safe flight.
Xie xie.
A safe flight and trip home.
He said,祝你安全到到了的呀。哦，谢谢。Okay,那你回去坐。
Thank you.
Yeah, and also, this is him, so I could help him out for, you know, find a location for his temple. Thank you very much. But, and also, myself, I'm, I am working for LVCNN news reporter. This is a part of my other job, too, because I was graduate from UZO.
And I connected you this morning with our Director of Communications, and they will follow up and put you on the mailing list, so you have everything.
So I would love to...
So we appreciate it. Thank you.
I would love to communicate with, you know, the Chinese community with all the news, what happened in Las Vegas.
Correct.
I would love to make a special report for that. And also...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. I would just, I'd love to have you go on, tell us more, but the three minutes is long over.
Oh, it's a three minutes? Okay, I didn't know that.
So, yes, I'm so sorry. But thank you. And Scott Adams would be happy to help you. Asian Chamber of Commerce, Buddhist group right now that we have here.
West Charleston.
And West Charleston, and Mr. Wriggleman, who has, and Jace Radke, who have your card. Thank you so much.
The three minutes for him, and three minutes, two minutes, one minute for me. Okay. My company was approved by the state governor, the state governor office. They gave me hired employee. I have, they approved me to hire 29 employees. So I'm looking for the...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other public comment at this point? Thank you.
Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I've got two Buddhist centers as neighbors, and they're excellent neighbors, by the way.
Would you please be good enough to lend her the names of the people?
I have no idea who they are.
Okay. Or the location. Then the locations.
I hope the council saw frontline last night, where the thieving bankers walked. And on item number 60, on the billboards, Councilman Ross and Councilman Barlow. The reason we have those five-year reviews on those billboards is because years ago, they weren't being maintained, and they had graffiti all over the things, and that's why that they had those five-year reviews. And I think that's a good idea to put those, to keep those reviews on, because, and then they found out, if you remember right, some of them didn't even have construction permits, if you remember. I'm just pointing that out, but there's a reason that they had the five-year reviews. And let's see. On item number 20, on those parking meters, they said that they got some, they have those reader things. Would I would like the new ones that they're talking about. On the extended time, I wish that there would be a sign, you know, that says, if you're going to be here over two hours, to direct them to the nearest parking garage, because I just talked to Kaylee, I think her name was, and she says the parking garage are open at 24 hours, and we could still get the revenue on that. So if there would just be some directed there, and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, hearing done. We will move on to item number 72. Councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's up on the agenda and scheduled for action. Are there any members, is there a member who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? Councilwoman, we'll start with you, since we didn't last for several times.
There it is. I've come to appreciate more this council discussion time, because I believe it gives to us an opportunity that we've had concern about in the past, and that's to be able to share with our fellow council members thoughts that we have about doings in the city without breaking the open meeting law. And I'm going to use that today. Some people say the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again while expecting a different result. Well, 2013 is a new year, and I've decided to stop the insanity that I sometimes find connected with my ward. As a councilperson, I am dependent upon city staff to keep me up to date on many of the happenings in my ward. And while it is impossible to be updated on every little thing, I absolutely expect to be kept informed... thing, I absolutely expect to be kept informed on major issues and happenings. Sadly, there are many times when this does not happen, or it does not happen in a timely fashion. In the past, on numerous occasions, I have brought up this significant lack of communication from staff to council, and yet it continues to be a problem, and I know it's not just with me, I've heard it from some other council individuals. From this point forward, each time this occurs, I will bring up these instances to light in this manner. This past week, the Department of Economic and Urban Development failed to inform me of a very significant deal on which they are working, even though my staff and I specifically asked to be kept in the loop, and worked very closely with them on a related issue in the past. Neither EUD staff nor the director took the time to pass on any information to either myself or my staff, and to me, that is unacceptable. I was also unable to depend upon the community service chief to whom the director reports. I have been assured this will not happen again, and I hope that that is truly the case. And because I absolutely do not want to give the wrong impression, I also want to bring up those individuals and departments that are worthy of receiving extra praise. And this week, I want to thank Jerry Walker and his staff in operations and maintenance for their wonderful work and communication skills, for their excellent job of keeping us in touch quickly. And while it is often nothing more than a quick email, I am continually receiving up-to-date input unsolicited from Jerry's group about my ward, and it is very much appreciated. I want to say thank you. In addition to that, I want to add that we will have a Ward 1 Fifth Family Health Festival and Trail Walk, all ages, Saturday, February 9th, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Pioneer Park, located at 7449 Braswell Drive, B-R-A-S-W-E-L-L Drive. There'll be free admission, t-shirts available for the first 100 attendees, raffle tickets for sale. The Outside Las Vegas Foundation, Weight Watchers, and our cities are working together on this fun health festival for the whole family. And I know Carolyn made a remark earlier today when it came up about weight and exercise, and how often it's brought to our attention. I'm going to be, I feel very strongly the same way, I'm going to be out there, and I'm going to be trying. So I invite everyone to enjoy a community expo with health and outdoor vendors in the park, as well as trail walks to nearby parks. Learn about many fun ways to get active and healthy in our community. Please contact Robin at 229-6405 for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Councilwoman in Ward 1. We are going to go numerically. Councilman Beers in Ward 2.
I have a couple of stars-oriented issues to mention today. The first is, is the Nevada Language Teacher of the Year for 2013, who is an instructor in Ward 2 at Palo Verde High School. Mrs. Rush, teacher's honors, Spanish grades nine through 12, University of Utah grad, been a teacher for 25 years at Palo Verde for seven, and very passionate about teaching and the students in Clark County. I wish I could converse with her in her second language, but that un poquito part was the only part of the class at Clark High School that I passed. This is, I guess, an angelic star, a celestial star, is of interest to some, and toward that end, there will be a public telescope clinic at the Red Rock Canyon Visitor Center this Saturday. Kind of interesting, inviting people all around the valley to dust off your old telescope and take it out to the visitor's center, and they'll help set it up and tune it up and see what you can see up there. Yeah, be kind of fun. We're also forming up Team Beers here in a couple of months, we're going to have a Easter Seals Two Mile Fun Run Walk. We're forming Team Beers today with a lofty $1,000 fundraising goal. We would invite anyone who would like to walk with us to join us. This is taking place very close to the confluence of the ward, let me see if I get them all right, 1, 2, 4, and 5 boundaries, so.
Councilwoman and I have just said, if our schedules are clear, that's a very big if.
I understand.
We will absolutely come.
Be there.
And be there.
We would love to have you, it's going to be a two-mile thing, it's, it's more fun than, than not, and it'll be a good time, so. That's all we have for Ward 2.
Okay, thank you very much, and we've just made a commitment, hopefully.
Right.
Please let our staff know, so we know where we're going. And now, Ward 3, Councilman Coffin.
This will be brief. Your Honor, thank you very much. This has been a very good day for all of us, another classic example of new growth coming in a smart fashion, and what's nice is growth is coming to areas that have been neglected in the past. You saw today examples of things that are happening in, in the naked city portion of the city, Ward 3, which has had many, many names, but the, the people there really appreciate the support of the council. Today, the unanimous support for the Casa de Luz mission outreach, that's a very important thing, because it means we care about the people that are poor, and that we recognize that we, we help those who are helping them. It's very hard for the city to do it, we have limited funds, and we spend $3 million a year on homeless people, and yet, we can't, we cannot begin to scratch the surface on all the needs that people have when they're down and out. And what we pray is that they're, they live long enough so that they down does not become out forever, but that they have a chance to come back to life, as, as we are trying to do for all of us as the economy improves. So I want to thank the council very, very fervently for their assistance on this issue and their understanding. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and now on to wonderful Ward 4, Mayor Protem, go for it.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite everyone, especially those folks that live in Ward 4, with, to a Coffee with the Mayor and myself event. It will be held at the Omelet House, which is located at Lake Mead and Rampart, right next to the Smith's Food King. It will be held on Tuesday, January 29th, from 8:00 a.m. to 9:30. Again, it's, it's primarily for the Ward 4 residents, but anybody can come down, this is a good time for you to spend some time chatting with the, the mayor and myself about any issues or ideas that you may have. Be glad to have you, and have breakfast. So again, it's Coffee with the Mayor and myself, Tuesday, January 29th, 8:00 to 9:30 a.m., the Omelet House at Lake Mead and Rampart. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow, Ward 5 is next.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to invite the community out to Coffee with the Councilmen on February 7th, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the corner of Bonanza and Rancho. This is an opportunity for residents, of course, to come out and speak with me and my staff as it relates to any issues that you may have, or just come out to share with me some of the exciting things that you've been up to, or some of the exciting developments that you plan to bring forward into 2013. Also, on February 9th, the, at the northwest corner of D and Owens, at 12:00 noon, the Berkeley Square Historic District banner unveiling will take place, so we want to make sure that the entire community in the historical West Las Vegas community comes out and really celebrate in this historic community, the hanging of the new historic banners for the Berkeley Square Historic District at 12:00 noon on February 9th. Also, on February 12th, at 1327 H Street, 1327 H Street, the, there will be an unveiling of a, and grand opening of a senior apartment complex named in honor of my mother, Ms. Aldine Klein Barlow, and we will be having the grand opening of that senior development taking place at 10:00 a.m. at the corner of Madison and H Street. So please come out, I'm inviting everyone to come out, and I really want to thank all those who were involved with, surprising me with this honor of my mother and naming the building, the senior development, after her. And finally, on February 23rd, I will be hosting in conjunction with the 100 Black Women of Southern Nevada, a private sector business forum right here in the city council chambers. So for those of you who are interested in starting a business, a private business, not prof, not nonprofit, but private business, we will be hosting a private sector business forum right here in the council chambers, February 23rd, and that is save the date, and further information will be forthcoming. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. Las Vegas, we need your help in our continuing partnership with Nevada Childseekers. We do have a, a missing young lady, her name is Isabella Rojas, she is 16 years old, four foot 11, 110 pounds, wonderful green eyes, red hair. She is, was last seen out in the northwest, as a matter of fact, just a few days ago, last seen in the area of North El Capitan Way and Horse Drive. She was last seen wearing dark PJ pants and a black thermal shirt, black slippers, she may be carrying a red duffel bag with personal belongings, and she does have braces. If anyone knows the whereabouts or any information leading to the whereabouts of this young lady, please call Nevada Childseekers at 702-458-7009, or the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department at 702-828-3111. Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers.
And finally, please join me at the Town Square, Saturday, February 2nd, 8:30 in the morning, for the kickoff of the annual Run for a Wish 5K Run and One Mile Fun Walk. The event helps Make-A-Wish Foundation of Southern Nevada grant wishes of children with life-threatening medical conditions to enrich human experience with hope, strength, and joy. And of course, on that same day, the day before, Friday, the 1st, don't forget to wear red in honor of National Wear Red Day to help American Heart Association increase awareness of women's heart health issues. Our next city council meeting will be held on Wednesday, February 6th, 2013, here in city council chambers, beginning at 9:00 a.m., and we thank you all for your attendance. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.